Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mayor Michael Dillon Brennan, and I would like to call the September 4, 2018, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Roth.
Here.
Mr. Weisman.
Here.
Mr. Sims.
Here.
Mrs. Cardy.
Here.
Mr. Erdl.
Mrs. Cameron.
President for short time.
Mrs. Weiss.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilman Erdl?
So moved.
So.
Is there any discussion?
Thanks.
Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Roth.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All those who are able, if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is the approval of minutes. Okay, there's a request that, okay, that those be tabled. Do we require a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Roth.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman. Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, the approval of minutes is tabled. Next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes with a total time allowed for speakers at fifteen minutes. We have an extensive agenda this evening. I intend to enforce the fifteen-minute limit. If you are here to speak, please be economical in your comments. If there's anyone who would care to speak, now would be the time. If, and anybody who would like to speak, please simply come up to the podium, speak into the microphone so that we can hear you and so that you are recorded for the record. Please be sure to state your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Juliana Sadox Savino. I live at 2436 Warrensville Center Road. I'm a bicyclist. I would like to see some more bicycle-friendly things added to University Heights. What I'm proposing are for four streets to have the signage that says Bike May Use Full Lane. The four streets I have in mind are Warrensville Center Road, Cedar Road, Sillsby, and Washington. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
All right.
No?
All right.
Okay, thank you. I would simply add that we do have a proposal awaiting ODOT approval for the addition of bike lanes on Warrensville Center Road for the full length except for the very end at Fairmount Circle where it would be a charo-type situation.
I have some favor charos over bike lanes.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name is Marie Hood. I'm a resident at 2248 Barrington Road, and I must say, this time that I'm here in front of this mic is really such a great pleasure. I'm looking at something new here. It's been awhile since I was begging and pleading the other mayors for to pave my street. Barrington Road looks beautiful, and I have to say thanks to our new mayor, Mayor Michael Brennan, and the city council. I really deeply appreciate it. I went down the block today, and I have the residents on Barrington Road who also appreciate what you have done, and I would like to personally say, thank you, thank you, thank you. You are indeed a man of your word.
Thank you, Mrs. Hood. It is our pleasure to serve all the residents of University Heights and especially on this project, the residents of Barrington Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Might we have Mrs. Hood open every meeting?
Second.
Good evening. My name is Maurice Miller, and I lived at 13533 Cedar Road for the past twenty-three years, and this is my first time attending one of these meetings. I've got a question. Recently, there was an article in a local newspaper indicating that there will be an increase in the rental inspection fee. Is that currently being dissolved, or is, where are we, where are we at now in this process? Are we going to continue to increase the rental inspection fee?
Well, we're going to address this later in the meeting. I was going to cover this in the mayor's report, and I believe Councilman Weisman was also going to cover this in, in his committee report for the building committee. There is presently a, an executive memo in place that delayed implementation of the increase of fee until September fourteenth. The building committee has, while they do not have a replacement ordinance as of yet, I believe I would be fairly assessing the tone and direction of the committee if I said that they are looking to change the inspection program. There will be a fee increase, but probably not the kind of increase that we presently have on the books, and probably a more, probably a more refined approach to how the inspections would be done, which would also take, be a factor in what the actual fees would be.
Indeed. Now, you're saying that you will not have a definitive answer until the fourteenth of this month?
What I'm saying is, is there's, there is a, there is a delay of the implementation of the fees until September fourteenth.
Okay.
And I have, I will be making a proposal later in this meeting as to how we should, you know, handle that going forward from the fourteenth. I don't necessarily want to get ahead of myself and use a public forum time to talk about business.
I understand. Okay. So that will be addressed at some point?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Virginia Benson, 3621 Cedar Brook Road. I don't even know where to start. I've been a resident for almost twenty-eight years, and as you know, Mayor, I've been talking to you, and you know I've been talking to you, and I'm not very happy about quite a few things. I live on Cedar Brook. I feel like Cedar Brook and Brockway and Cedar on the west side is the worst-looking part of the city. I've been complaining about it, I've been calling about it, I've been riding around taking pictures. So if anybody wants to see my pictures, you're welcome to see it. I have it on my iPhone, and I have it on my iPad, and I really would like to meet with Mayor and the members at the city council from one of my basements along with my neighbors because I'm not alone in how I feel, and something has to be done. Because like I said, I'm riding up and down the street taking pictures. I'm angry every time I leave my house. If I go west to Jackson and Cedar, I'm upset. If I go east to Brockway, I'm upset. That brown house on the corner is an eyesore. It's just a lot, and so I need someone to help me. I need someone to listen because I'm really not happy.
Could you repeat? I couldn't hear what she said.
I'm sorry.
I'm saying that I live on Cedar Brook. I feel like the west side of University Heights looks really bad compared to that size. Besides, there's weeds all the way down to Cedar, three square feet high, the gutters are blocked, there's trash everywhere, and some of the houses are just atrocious, and I don't understand. Because I actually, I've been along with a lot of my neighbors for quite some time and just put the old there, and I'm fed up, and I need someone to help me resolve this problem.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Benson.
Hello. My name is Patricia Smith. I also own a two-family on Cedar, 13501, and so I'm also representing the, you know, I know you just mentioned about the, the fee, and I just wanted to add to that, that my hope is that the fee would be reasonable. It was very upsetting to see what the, you know, what they were trying to increase the amount to. I want to just mention that it doesn't discourage owners, people who want to be landlord in the city, to want to come here for that, you know, that reason because of, for that reason, you know, that's such a large increase of inspection. And by the way, inspection literally takes ten minutes, okay? Or, at the most. I just want to say that. I keep my property up very well. I've been here twenty-something years. Everyone, most of the people that come out and check my property, mostly I think it's Tom Ingram. He's always complimenting me how well I keep my property. And so I want to mention that when a owner lives at the property, that's something you guys should keep in mind. An owner that lives there that keeps their property up, I don't think that should have this large increase of having inspection come, especially when they're there and they're keeping it up. I can understand for someone who lives out of town, who knows nothing about what's going on with their property, I could see an inspection, you know, a regular yearly inspection like that. But for the ones who own the property, you know, take care of their property and is there and overseeing their property, it almost seems to me it's not necessary really for someone to come every year and inspect when it's, you know, pretty well-kept. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind for landlords who lives on the property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith.
My name is Sheri Duer, and I live at 4024 Washington Boulevard, and I'm not sure there's anybody that's lived here longer than me. If they have, it's not by much. And I have to disagree with the two people from Cedar Road. Once upon a time, this city was a great place to live, and it was beautiful, and it no longer is. And Kelly doesn't want me to use this word, and she's been my friend for years, but I tell my family and friends I now live in the slums of University Heights, and that is absolutely the way it is. And you may be a good homeowner, but across the street from me is just awful, and so is this apartment on the corner. Not, not good neighbors either, okay? And I'm going to make it my hobby in retirement. You're going to get sick of seeing me, but since we're so limited to the amount of time, I have a laundry list this long of things that need to be done in this suburb. The first one is, I am the first house past this apartment. It is my understanding that the city owns the tree lawns, and us owners have to maintain the property. Therefore, this leaves me out of the picture. There is a tree on the tree lawn from the apartment that has roots going under my tree lawn, and they have just reached my driveway. So the next thing that's going to happen is the driveway is going to be lifted up. The sidewalks already lifted up, and obviously, nobody cares because it's been like that for a long time. So I want to know, who is the person that is going to tell me who's going to fix this and when it's going to get done? Because if it's not done by the winter, I noticed a huge growing from last fall to this spring. It was in the middle, now it's all the way over to my driveway. That tree needs to come down. It is way too big for that tree lawn. It's way too high, and I don't know whose job it is, but somebody needs to check the sewers because the, the roots are going all ways. And I had a horrible experience in 2015, the worst besides losing my parents. I had six floods in my basement. One, two, three, four, five, six. So somebody needs to make sure that that tree roots are not in the, in the sewer. So, is it the city that's going to fix it, or is it the responsibility of the apartment Nobody's going to give me an answer?
I really don't know. I think we're going to have to find out.
Like I said, it needs to be done before the winter comes because the ground's going to be hard, and the roots are going to be under my driveway, and I will not be a happy camper.
Ms. Duer, Mike Cicero is sitting in for our law director, Luke McConville, today. He'd be happy to respond.
Ma'am, having been a resident on Sillsby for seventeen years and fourteen years on Ashurst, I would tell you that in University Heights, without question, and it's not necessarily everywhere, on your street, you own to the curb. It is, is your property until the curb, and the same thing with the apartment owner.
Okay.
What you're thinking of is that for a long time, municipalities had a duty to maintain the streets, the curbs, the tree lawn, and sidewalks.
Okay.
And every city enacted an ordinance that said, homeowner, you have to shovel the snow off your sidewalks, even though we have the bombardiers here and have had them since I was two years old.
One of the best perks of this city.
Agreed. But nonetheless, the Ohio Legislature changed the law definitively after the tree, for people who remember in Cleveland Heights on Forest Hills, a, a sick tree fell on a motorist and killed the motorist, and Cleveland Heights got hit with a big judgment. So the legislature changed the law. The city only need to take care of that which hangs over the street because the city is only responsible for the streets and the curb.
Okay.
Not the sidewalks.
So then who's going to tell the owner of the apartment that they need to cut these roots and dig them up, and next spring, plant grass and put topsoil?
You can.
Pardon?
You can hire counsel. It may be something that needs legal action, and I'm sure the mayor will talk with the building department and see if there's, there, I can't think of necessarily a violation that may exist off the top of my head, ma'am, but, you know.
So you're saying that the tree is on their property, it's infringing my property, and they don't have to make right by it?
No.
Oh, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying it may result in you taking legal action against your neighbor. That's what I'm saying.
Well, about eighteen months ago, I called the service department and complained about this, and I'll tell you exactly what I was told. Put grass seed on it and cover it up with topsoil. An amateur green thumb knows that is not the answer. And if you're telling me that we have to go through this whole rigamarole, it'll be next year, it'll be under my driveway and lifting up the cement like it's doing to the sidewalk. So, this, this is not acceptable. It needs to be done by November before the ground gets hard and before the roots get any further under my driveway.
Okay.
So, that wasn't my answer. Now, I know you have limited time, but...
We do, and the five minutes is up, so if you want to reach a conclusion...
So what's the fifteen minutes then?
The fifteen minutes is for everybody. Five minutes is for an individual speaker.
Oh, well, then, I already talked to the police chief, and so I was going to tell you what we discussed and the reason I feel like I live in the slums, but if I don't have the time, you people are going to get sick of seeing me because I'm going to be coming to every meeting with my laundry list of things that this city needs to do. So, ma'am, it's not just where you live. It's right over here. It is right over here, and I feel like I live in the middle of a parking lot or a used car lot because there are cars parked everywhere.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Duer. We look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. And Ms. Benson, if you wouldn't mind, I know I have your contact information, but Mr. Grogan Myers is in the back of the room in the University Heights Polo. If you wouldn't mind giving him your phone number so we can schedule another meeting, that would be, that would be great. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd care to speak this evening, care to address the city? Very good. Next item on the agenda is reports and communications from the mayor and taking of action. We've had an entire summer's worth of activities, but I'm going to try to keep this brief. First of all, I'd like everyone to save the date of Thursday, November fifteenth, 2018, for the city's first civic awards dinner since 2007. At that event, we will name our 2018 Citizen of the Year, our 2018 Employee of the Year, our 2018 Public Servant of the Year. Some of these haven't been awarded in awhile, and we're bringing those back. We're also going to name a number of other, make a number of other recognitions. So, next week, we will be delivering a special edition of the newsletter soliciting nominations and recommendations for civic recognition from the community, and I also asked the city council make nominations and recommendations for recognition as well. Some more dates to mark on your calendars for police and fire outreach...
Can I ask a question?
No.
Where is it going to be?
It'll be at John Carroll, but save the date, and we'll have more information about that.
About time, date?
Yes, yes, it'll be in the evening. Dinner. Dinner time. Okay, so, if you mark your calendars for police and fire outreach events, Coffee with the Cop will be Wednesday, October third, at 10:00 a.m. at Jack's Deli. This event is a relaxed, informal discussion about issues, whatever issues residents who attend find important. The goal is to improve trust and build relationships one cup of coffee at a time. The University Heights Fire Department will host an open house on Sunday, October seventh, from 11:30 to 2:30 p.m. Come tour the fire station and see the trucks. There will be demonstrations, a safety presentation, and activities for the kids. One week ago tonight, the city government of University Heights met jointly with the Cleveland Heights, University Heights City School District School Board to discuss, among other things, the future of the Wylie property located here in University Heights. At that meeting, I pledged this administration's commitment to working with the school district to find a use for the property that serves our community. My complete remarks are posted on Facebook and were quoted in substantial part in the Sun News last week. Formal inauguration of our new John Carroll University President, Dr. Michael Johnson, will be occurring this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. at the Hamlin Quad at John Carroll University. The community is invited to attend. I will be there, and I will urge us all to attend and welcome Dr. Johnson to our community. I welcome our university students back to school, but the subject of nuisance activities at rental houses has again arisen. I don't want to spoil the party, but your having a good time cannot infringe upon the peaceable and quiet enjoyment of our own homes. We do have an ordinance on the books about nuisance activities. Disturbing the peace is among those nuisance activities. I want to impress that this nuisance ordinance is not a new program. We are merely enforcing the laws that have long been on the books. With respect to a certain so-called "party house" on Warrensville Center Road, I have prepared and sent today the following letter to the landlords of that property. Dear landlords, University Heights is a welcoming city, a place where people of all ages and backgrounds are proud to call home. Our houses are close together, and in order to keep harmony with our neighbors, we must be cognizant of everyone's right to peaceably enjoy their home without conflict or undue infringement by others. I send this letter as a courtesy to you and to bring to your attention an incident that occurred at one of your rental properties here in the city of University Heights. From our police blotter, on August 25, 2018, at 2:31 hours, police were called to 2494 Warrensville Center Road for a complaint of a loud college party. Upon their arrival, officers observed 100 to 150 college-aged party attendees in the area of the front yard at street. Several party attendees jumped a backyard fence into neighboring private property. Brian Ditko, 21 years of age, of Westerville, Ohio; Anthony Mogland, 21 years of age, of Canton, Ohio; Daniel Lentz, 23 years of age, of Cleveland, Ohio; Rayali Brown, 21 years of age, of Bedford, Ohio; and Daniel Dispro, 21 years of age, of Avon Lake, Ohio, were all issued summons for UH Ordinance 648.11, misdemeanor in the second degree, disturbing the peace. All of the men have mandatory appearances in the Shaker Heights Municipal Court on September 12, 2018, at 10:00 a.m. These citations qualify as an occurrence of a nuisance activity under University Heights Ordinance 648-17. A copy of the ordinance is enclosed for your reference. After a second occurrence of a nuisance activity within a twelve-month period, the chief of police or his designee will send you a notice declaring the property a nuisance. Subsequent incidents will result in fines to you as the landlord of $250 for the third incident, $500 for each subsequent incident thereafter. The building commissioner may also rescind your rental permits, requiring your tenants to vacate the premises. If you do not pay these fines, the unpaid fines will be assessed to your tax bill. If they then remain unpaid, future rental permits will be declined, and court action may be taken against you or the property to collect. These remedies are in addition to other remedies allowed by law. While you do not live in our city, I trust that you would not tolerate these conditions next to your own home, so I hope you understand why I've taken the time to contact you directly. And now that the seriousness of this matter has been brought to your attention, I hope you will impress upon your tenants to moderate their behavior and be mindful of their neighbors. This is not to spoil their good time. This is to ensure that their good time does not spoil the neighborhood. Very truly yours, Michael Dillon Brennan, Mayor of University Heights. Thank you. Turning now to the updates to the rental registration program. After the last regular city council meeting on June 18, 2018, and in light of the city council's building committee chair, Councilman Mark Weisman, expressing his intention to have a special committee meeting over the summer on the ordinance, as mayor, I took an executive action to postpone implementation of the fee schedule in Ordinance 2018-28. That postponement expires on Friday, September 14th. The building committee met last month, and they are exploring ideas for a replacement rental permit and inspection ordinance. However, it will not be completed before September 14th. As part of the postponed implementation, the city building department has continued rental inspections, have issued temporary rental permits that expire on September 14th. However, our building department has not collected any rental permit application fees in the meantime. At the building committee meeting, there was a strong sense by the council members present that an extension beyond September 14th was needed. However, as administrator of the city, I am concerned about continuing to issue temporary permits at no charge. After consulting with our law director and with Councilman Weisman, it is my recommendation that the September 14th deadline be allowed to lapse, and that city council at its next regular council meeting of September 17th repeal the ordinance in part to restore the previous fee schedule so that the city may collect the old fee while council continues work on the new program. And to be clear, that repeal would then restore temporarily the previous program, the previous fees, the biennial inspections, and then once we're ready to deploy a more fully fleshed-out rental inspection program with modified fees based upon the service we're going to render to our community, then that would then take the place of the existing or pre-existing rental fee and ordinance, rental fee and inspection program. So, I will leave it to council to reflect on which way we should take that. We have until September 14th to, to consider how we handle the executive action I took, and then we have on this, we have the 17th then to consider at that council meeting an emergency measure which I would urge would substitute for the previous ordinance. This concludes my report. Thank you. Turning now to the regular agenda items, I would ask for a motion to consider item F first, as the appropriate, the appropriations set forth in item F, as a matter of procedure ought to be considered before many of the other items on the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion by Mr. Weisman, a second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mr. Roth.
Aye.
Mr. Weisman.
Aye.
Mr. Sims.
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and we are on now item F of... Okay, motion carries, and we are on now Item F of the Agenda Ordinance, 2018-44, Appropriating Funds for Current and Other Expenditures of the City of University Heights, Ohio, for the period commencing January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018, on emergency. Mr. Goff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance includes a couple of different items going on. A lot of the general fund is kind of cleaning up, moving money from one place to another. There are some new funds in the general fund. In particular, in the general fund for new funds is, the big item is for fire, both on the personnel side, where there's additional money due to the overtime we've incurred this year due to the timeframe that it's taking to do the new hires. We also have some new money specifically in fire that's a result of appropriations for some of the grants that they're receiving. We have a couple other items where we had, some expenditures go over appropriations. And then, there's also the big movement of money out of the General Services Department into a separate department for transfers and advances, simply to be able to clearly show how much money of that is set aside for transfer and advances and not for other spending. We then have a couple, a particular big dollar amount items going on in some of the other funds. In the street fund, there's an extra quarter million dollars. That is due to when 2017 was closed, out purchase order for part of the 2017 paving was closed, and so, we ended up having to pay in early 2018 about a quarter million dollars for part of the 2017 street paving using current year appropriations. So, we're just re-appropriating part of the fund balance we went unspent in '17 to make up for that shortage in appropriations. We have appropriations of about $1.2 million in the Sewer and Water Fund for the Washington, I believe Grove Land was the other one, for the water line project, and that money is being reimbursed back by the City of Cleveland's Water Department. We have grant money for the Department of Public Safety, that is an EMS grant for fire. We have the remainder of the bulletproof vests for, that's federal funds that should be accounted for in a separate fund that previously was accounted for in the general fund, that is going into Law Enforcement Fund. CDBG Fund, we have, the lowest bidder for that one is over what we'd previously appropriated, and so, this is the additional money for that. It's no guarantee that money would actually be spent. I believe there is a 10% contingency built into that bid, but I might need to be corrected by somebody else. And then, capital projects, we also have substantial increase there. We have money in there for the IT improvements. We have $100,000 for police, where there was a motion back in May to allocate additional $100,000 to police for, police cruisers that weren't purchased in '17, that will be purchased in '18. And this is just acknowledging that as a change in appropriations, not just a motion that is consenting from council. We also have a couple other various items in the Capital Improvement Fund that I could go into a little more detail if requested. That kind of sums up mostly appropriations, and then, we have a couple specific transfers and advances that are being authorized out of the money that's previously been appropriated. And then, we do have one transfer that was previously authorized and not posted, that I have not yet posted, from the general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. That's for $450,000. It does not appear that we will need that due to the balance that's currently carried in the Capital Improvement Fund, so in order to retain that in the general fund, I'm asking for that prior transfer that was approved but not posted to be rescinded. That is the appropriations ordinance, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any questions for Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Director, for your reporting, for your hard work. And I know that earlier tonight, our vice mayor, who is also the chairman of the Finance Committee, held a meeting so that some of these items could be discussed, and I'm not sure what the discussion was, because unfortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting, and I know that we have a lot of work in this city to get our books in order, but I just have to make sure that I understand what these things are in a little more detail and the reason for them again. And he did a good job of, you know, running through it very quickly, but there's some large items here. I just want to make sure to understand what's going on. So, I will start off with the fire department. You mentioned the fact that there was a delay in hiring staff, or do you want to explain what happened?
In terms of the timetable that was originally envisioned for hiring staff, I'm not sure what the original timetable was. I'd refer you to our interim fire chief for that. But, suffice to say, in terms of spending, we have $210,000 specifically set aside in the line item within that personnel for overtime. As of the last time I had looked at that, what was remaining in that line item, which was prior to the payroll paid out last Thursday, out of that $210,000, we had $11,000 left. The overtime has been very excessive. I know, I've been told by both the interim chief as well as some of the firefighters that, due to just the staffing, where it's been this year, and how long it's taken to fill it, we've not only had overtime, we've had mandatory overtime. I can say definitively, we had at least one firefighter on the Fourth of July, we had mandatory overtime on the Fourth of July, and-
You were here on the Fourth of July, I presume, but that's a good explanation, but in your work with the fire chief and with the mayor, this $150,000 that you are proposing be added to the fire department is for additional overtime that is anticipated-
It's not just additional overtime. It is additional personnel costs. So, it is largely for overtime, but then, it's also for things like the workers' comp that goes along with that, the Medicare portion of the city's fees, also, any portion of the pension that is not paid for out of the police and fire, the fire pension-
Excuse me, I don't mean to cut you off, but we have a lot to go through-
Yes.
And your explanation is, it more than suffices. So, moving forward, when we get to the end of this year, what are we anticipating will be the total increase in the fire department over what we budgeted?
Honestly, in terms of the actual increase over what was originally budgeted, whether or not there's the need possibly come back for additional appropriations later, I do not yet know that answer.
All right. Well, I would hope that we are taking measures to control these costs. This is not the first time that we've had situations where the overtime in departments began to grow well beyond what they should be. I would encourage the fire chief and the mayor to take whatever actions are needed to get whoever we need to get hired, to make sure that we don't have to have as much overtime, and to make sure that we don't have to have mandatory overtime, and to make sure that we just keep this and all of our financial line items in order.
I know-
So, I'll move on to the General Services Department, and I just want to make sure I understood what's going on there.
Okay, General Services, we also have a kind of a counterpart general administration. From what I've seen, basically, they're overhead costs that we can't easily allocate to other departments. So, at the beginning of the year, transfers and advances were appropriated out of the general services. Myself, for just a matter of bookkeeping, want to see that in a separate department. So, there's no temptation to accidentally spend some of the money that was not intended for expenditures, but intended rather as transfers, which is movement one time out of the general fund to another fund, or as advances, which is movement as a short-term loan out of the general fund to another fund with the anticipation that all are part of it will be repaid at some point in the future. So, this is really just an accounting matter, so that we're tracking it in a separate line item.
Thank you. For what reason are we adding another $250,000 to street maintenance?
That goes back to the street funding, the street paving work that was done at the end of 2017, that, due to how the accounting was handled at the end of the year, the money was not encumbered at the end of the year as part of a purchase order, and so, the appropriations at the end of '17, when the calendar ends, those appropriations unless they're encumbered as a purchase order go away, which means to spend that money, you have to come back to council, even though the same money's sitting in the fund, you have to come back to council and ask for additional appropriations. So, that vendor for the paving project was actually paid in 2018, and so, we had to use part of the 2018 appropriations to pay for it. So, this is re-appropriating money that went planned to be spent in '17. We entered into a contract to spend it, and we just never spent it.
Thank you. And then, Sewer and Water?
That is the Grove Land and Washington Water Line Project, and we have to spend the money, but we are reimbursed by the Cleveland Water Department, and there's an invoice currently pending to get the money from Cleveland. And we can go ahead and spend the money, even though we don't have it in-house yet, because we already know that the money is in the process of collections.
So, there, you're telling me that we never set aside the money?
I see nowhere in the budget that that was actually appropriated, even though we knew about it in advance.
Okay, what about the Capital Improvement Fund?
The Capital Improvement Fund has several different items going on there. The biggest single one is for the police department. Back in May, you guys had approved by a motion vote, additional $100,000, $137,000, additional monies for police cruisers, because cruisers hadn't been purchased in '17 and were to allow them to be purchased in '18. However, when doing that by a motion vote, even though that's, you guys were consenting to it, that is not enough authority to actually spend the money. It has to be done by an appropriations ordinance. So, this is actually doing the appropriations side of that approval.
All right, thank you.
Also, in that fund, we have a couple other items. Do you want me to go into further detail?
Yeah, thank you.
Was that all, Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Goff? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Goff. Is there a motion?
So moved and on emergency.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Partey, second by Mr. Wiseman, on emergency. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you first take the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And then, on the main motion.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll return to the agenda in order otherwise, beginning with Agenda Item A, Motion Approving IT Package from PC Alternatives for an Exchange Server with Domain Controller Computer Upgrades Necessary to Facilitate the Exchange Server Associated Software and Installation in an Amount Not to Exceed $63,334.99. James?
We're looking at this quote, this is from our current IT vendor, and most of it is for hardware, and actually, the vast majority is actually for software licenses. This is to implement Exchange Server so that we can bring email back in-house that allows us more control over the email and also the ability to do things as simple as calendar sharing. There are things that you would expect to be able to do in any reasonable-sized business, and this is implementing that ability. The domain controller is then the ability to have centralized administration of the computer network and all the computers on there, so it means ability to centralize security software, like antivirus, and malware software, the ability to do centralized maintenance of the computers. At this moment, that domain portion will not include the police department, as they have an existing network, and that is something that we will look to integrate in the future. Also includes in there, out of that price, about $15,000 for replacement of 15 computers throughout various departments that are old and unable to run off this domain controller. And also includes in there software for Microsoft Office. I've worked with the vendor on many of the software items to find cheaper solutions instead of having the retail prices, going and looking at several government rates that are available for a lot of the software. Baseline on anything that we're looking at this hardware is we're trying to keep expenses of something that we can't pick up and take with us if we were to move to a new facility or to renovate these facilities to a minimum. So, in terms of hardwired network that is sunk into the building, we're looking at about $1,500 to do it minimal. And then, the labor involved with this is billed at our standard hourly rate of $95 an hour, and it's estimated at 150 hours.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any questions for Mr. Goff on this? Mr. Rock?
I just have one question, and I'm not a computer-savvy person, so thank you for your explanation immediately before this, just now. Right now, our emails go through Gmail. Would this replace that?
Actually, not all of the emails go through Gmail. We actually have-
Okay, so my email goes through Gmail?
We actually have two different ways our email is done. I mean, it's kind of more elaborate, but I'll leave it as simple as that, as it's been explained to me by our IT. Because of the way our accounts were originally set up, when we'd gone with Gmail accounts years ago, and the limit on the number of accounts we could have, this is about bringing all that in-house and integrating it together, and allowing us more flexibility, and being able to do things like multiple calendars, share calendars. I mean, it'd be nice to be able to see what your fellow employees are, the mayor to know what we're up to without him to contact us individually, being able to make reservations for who's got council chambers, who's got the conference room, things like that.
So, since we're invited to multiple meetings for council committees, we would be able to have a calendar share so that it goes directly into our calendar for future meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Any further questions for Mr. Goff? Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mr. Sims. Is there any discussion on this motion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Item B, Motion to Authorize Entering into Contract with Minutemen Staffing for the 2018 through 2020 Temporary Labor Program in a Total Amount Not to Exceed $58,701 for the three years. Mr. McCourney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 17th, we opened bids for temporary services to provide fall yard waste collection curbside, that's both leaves and yard leaf bags. We had one bidder, it was Minutemen Staffing Services of Cleveland. They bid an amount of $17,638 annually, which amounts to $58,701 for a three-year contract. Funds for this were budgeted in our tree improvement fund, so I'm requesting council's authorization to let the mayor enter into an agreement with Minutemen Services for a three-year contract for these services.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCourney. Are there any questions for Mr. McCourney? Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McCourney, this is $58,000 total for the three-year period.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCourney.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Mrs. Cameron, did you have one? No? Okay. Mr. Rock?
You said this is for the leaf pickup, not for track pickup, correct?
They will be picking up yard waste on the tree lawns.
On the tree lawn, but not in the backyard?
But not in the backyard, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Any further questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize entry into a contract with Minutemen Staffing for the 2018-2020 Temporary Labor Program in an amount not to exceed $58,701 for three years.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is Item C, Motion to Authorize the Purchase of a 2018 Reinforced Rubber Track Four-Cylinder Diesel Sidewalk Snowplow Machine from Gibson Machinery LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $127,475. Mr. McCourney, you still have the floor.
Thank you again, Mayor. This was a bid that was opened August 17th. We had one bidder, Gibson Machinery of Oakwood Village. They had bid $127,475. This is for the replacement Bombardier of a earlier model that we currently still have, a 1986 model, which is 32 years old and has exceeded its useful life. We will hold on to that unit at least through this winter and use it as a backup in case one of the two newer units does break down. However, I wouldn't expect that with the brand-new models we have. The last one we purchased was in 2015, and I'm requesting council's authorization to spend the $127,475 to purchase a new- spend the $127,475 to purchase a new Bombardier.
Thank you, Mr. McCourney. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Sims, you have the floor.
Do you recall who we purchased the 2015 machine from and what the cost was?
It was also purchased...Gibson Machinery was also the low bidder at that time. We did have a second low bidder out of Michigan that...or a second bidder higher than Gibson. So the last machine was purchased from the same company. The amount was quite a bit less, though. It was $100 and...I want to say $109,000.
Thank you, Mr. McCourney. Any further questions? Mr. Rock?
Do you know why it's gone up significantly over three years?
I do not. That was the number.
Better technology or...
It is going to be very similar to the machine to the 2015 model that we purchased.
Due to inflation?
Correct.
Are they still made in Canada?
Yes. They're made by a company called Printeth, still in Quebec, Canada.
Okay.
$5,000 a year.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. McCourney? All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We've heard a couple people say this was our biggest perk of the city is sidewalk plowing, and so let's continue the program, and I'll make the motion to approve the purchase for $127,475.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Rock, second by Mr. Wiseman. Is there any discussion? Well, I would simply want to echo Mr. Rock's words here, you know, our city's ongoing commitment to service and to pedestrian safety in particular.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise? Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McCourney. Next is Item D. Motion to accept the lowest and best bidder for the 2018 Cedar and Green Crosswalk Improvements and entering into the contract for same. Mr. Chuni, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We opened bids last Thursday, August 30th. There were two bids received for this project, one by Burton Scott Contractors and the other one by Perk Company. Both are reputable contractors who have done this work in the surrounding cities. The low bid was submitted by Burton Scott Contractors LLC for $165,000. The project is funded, partially funded now, by a grant from Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. The grant is $142,965, so just less than what the low bid was. The work is generally...we're removing pavement, and we're putting in stamped concrete crosswalks. We're adding crosswalk pedestrian signals. We are adding striping and signage and other work, 88 curb ramps as well. So we are familiar with Burton Scott. They're a reputable contractor, and I recommend the city enter into the contract with them as the lowest and best bid. By contract, they have to be done by October 31st so that we can spend the money this year and get reimbursed this year from CDBG. And it will be a reimbursement. We have to pay for it first and then get the money back.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Are there any questions for Mr. Chuni? Mrs. Wise?
Yeah. Thank you. Just if you could refresh my memory, this grant also has the bus stops within that?
Yes. Yes.
So I know that we were thinking of possibly the solar bus stops, but now since the bids came in higher, are we not going to be doing that anymore?
I defer to Patrick.
If you're still proceeding with the solar bus stops?
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Okay. Even though...
It's actually outside this contract. We're doing it...
Secondly, directly.
Okay.
On a direct purchase. I don't have any more details than that.
Just because since we haven't...since we didn't think that we would be getting bids that would be over the grant, there's been no discussion about maybe scaling that piece down?
We did not discuss that staff this morning.
No, we have not discussed that. No.
Mr. Goff? We do run the risk, since it is a federal grant, that if we scale down the project, we are changing the scope of the project and thus potentially invalidating the whole grant.
Right. But that solar piece was something that we added on to it. It wasn't part of the original scope.
Yeah. That item not being part of the original scope is potentially a separate issue. I think the issue before us at the moment really is the overall project itself, and in terms of the money for that part, I know we could probably look for it out of a different place than out of this maybe.
Mayor, are you comfortable with that? With that overage?
I'm not a fan of the overage, but I understand why it happened. I mean, the thing is, is that the accelerated schedule for using these funds means that we are seeking bids for this project on an accelerated schedule at a time when these contractors are generally busy. The bids tend to come in higher when they're busy. They tend to come in lower when they're hungrier and have less to do. And I know from other conversations I've had with Mr. Chuni, there was a similar project the city of Euclid tried to do that they didn't get any bids on because the contractors were busy enough that they just kind of...perhaps they just looked past it. You know, that's their speculation. But, you know, I was happy that we even got bids on this project, given what happened in another neighboring city on a similar project. So I'm not a fan of the overage, but I understand why it happened, and I view this as if we're going to proceed with the project and use the grant money that we so valiantly sought. You know, Mr. Grogan Myers got some grant money for this city for a project kind of funding that we haven't seen CDBG funding in a few years. So given the circumstances of the market, I'm not...I would hate to throw away a grant or...and not proceed with this project as envisioned simply because of the contracting market at the time. We also have a $10,000 contingency in the $165.
Okay.
Now, I wouldn't throw that away now either, but hopefully we don't have to use it.
Mrs. Wise, did you have anything further?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Yes. Actually, my questions have been answered, and I, you know, again, I want to congratulate our community development director for working to get us this grant. So I want to make one point, just in terms of the way the motion is presented. I think that we need to indicate the name of the contractor that we are accepting the bid from and who we're entering into a contract with, and we need to indicate the amount. And then just as a procedural matter, and I think our finance director, and I can tell you how I would make the motion, and will make the motion if you would like, but the other question that I have, how do we ensure that, you know, we're going to advance $165,000 more than I...when $142 comes in a hundred and fifty-three?
Being in advance, I've already done the original portion that was approved at the special meeting in July, and we have an appropriation with the advance for the additional money. So what that does is that takes money from the general fund and loans it to the CDBG fund so that we can spend it and we don't have a negative fund balance in the CDBG fund. Upon getting the reimbursement back, we then will be able to...I'll come...have to come back to council for approval to advance back and return the money from the CDBG fund back to the general fund. That might very well happen this year, in which case it would probably be a last-minute ordinance in either November or December, most likely December, or it could be something that carries over to next year, and we'd still have to do the same thing. So the same way the appropriations ordinance had the approval from council for the transfers and advances, you will see another one for approval to advance any portion of the money that goes either unspent or reimbursed by the grant back to the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, are you asking for a question?
Yes, if you're ready.
I'll tell you. Go. Oh.
I had a question.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, we're...this is a...I appreciate all the work that Patrick has done, but at this point, we're in the hole $23,000 if the whole contingency gets spent. I'm not sure what happens with the rest of the project. We did add on the solar addition to the bus shelters, but that was on the assumption that it was going to all come in less than what the grant was for, and this was...I think we were considering this to be found money. But I, for one, would like to know sort of what's left to do, how much that we anticipate that costs us, because we're down 23 grand now. If the solar part of the shelters is $23,000, now we're at $50,000 for a project that we realistically thought wasn't going to cost us a dime. So I'm just a little uncomfortable at this point. I mean, I'm okay approving this. I think this is great, but I'm not getting enough information about what's left, what's outside the project, what's inside, what it might cost us. So if we could get some information on that, that'd be great.
Okay. Mr. Grogan Myers, are you in a position to address this point?
I will give some round figures, because I don't have them in front of me. But what I'll say is that when we brought the project to you for approval to go for the grant, I originally budgeted, I believe it was $12,000 or $15,000 for the bus shelters. And that did not include the solar package that Councilman Sims requested we look into. After looking into it and talking with RTA, we were able to secure a price that I believe was roughly $10,000 for both bus shelters with the solar packages. We actually overbudgeted a little bit, anticipating that the cost might be a little bit more than we expected. However, they came in at less than we expected.
$10,000 apiece or $10,000 total?
Total.
Total. Okay. So because we had a lot of discussion about could we...we didn't like the bus shelter design. Is this the one? And then the discussion was, well, we have to stick with that because that's what we put in the actual grant, so we can't really change that. But looking at the breakdown that these bids, I don't see anything about bus shelters in the bid specs that we got.
Correct, because we were going to direct order those from RTA.
Right.
So that would be outside the scope of the concrete work, which is what we were bidding out.
That'll be a total of $10,000, you're saying? Okay. Roughly. I understand. You don't have the exact figures.
We can do that, correct. We can do the bus shelters, and it doesn't have to do with this project. We're already at the RTA.
Right. And what's there...there's shelters there now.
Yes.
We're going to dispruse them up as long as we're changing...
Correct. Correct. It was designed to be more of a whole-scale intervention rather than just a concrete crosswalk.
Right. But we have to do the shelters, I think, as part of this, because this was in...because it was in the original grant.
It was part of the scope.
Right. Okay.
As Mr. Pop.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wise.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Thank you. Mr. Grogan Myers, Mrs. Partey?
Thank you. Mr. Chuni, I just want to thank you for indicating the required contract requirements and that there is an SBE subcontractor...
Oh, I forgot to mention that. Yes.
...that would be using almost...taking care of almost a quarter of this project. Given this council's emphasis and interest in including minority female and SBE contractors, I appreciate that information.
Okay. Yeah, I forgot to mention. So thank you for your mind.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Partey. Mrs. Wise?
I don't believe or anything, because we have a long agenda, but...
Okay.
His...that process went well with the minority bidding and the paperwork, because this is...
I gave a report in the beginning this year of everything that happened last year, and I intend to do that again in December, of all the contractors that we've hired and the subcontractors and whether it's SBE, MBE, or whatever.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
I mean, they are filling out the paperwork, so I am getting the information, and I will forward it to council.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Are there any further questions? If there are none, is there a motion? Mr. Sims, I know you were working on one.
I would move to accept the bid of Burton Scott Contractors LLC as the lowest and best bidder for the 2018 Cedar and Green Crosswalk Improvements and entering into the contract with the same in the amount of $165,000.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is Item E. Ordinance 2018-43 authorizing the transfer of parcel of land known as 3950 Silsby Road, permanent parcel number 722-17-1055, from the city of University Heights to the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Corporation as a public nuisance parcel. This is on emergency. Mr. Grogan Myers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure. I didn't see this part of my council packet by drafting a memo, as I usually do. So coming around, I'll try to summarize it as it's coming towards you.
Did you mind if we called it a little higher?
So 3950 Silsby Road is the corner property right here off the municipal campus at the corner. It was at the southeast corner of the intersection of St. Brook and Silsby. We have referred to that as the White House, the Storage House, and the Corner House over the years. The city originally acquired the property in January of 1998, and since that time, the property has been home to a city employee, a storage place for city documents, and it now sits vacant. And several times in 2016, the parcel, as you recall, City Hall flooded, as well as that Corner House flooded, and since then has been cleared of moldy boxes and whatnot and has sat vacant and has seriously deteriorated. So now there is a hole in the roof on the backside of the home that has leaked water through the second floor, or through the attic, through the second floor. So you'll see there are some pictures in there of that.
So we suck it.
It is dropped the ceiling, dropped the insulation, and it has leaked through the wood floors, through the ceiling, onto the floor of the kitchen below and into the basement. Also, as a result of the flooding, there are substantial mold problems in the basement, and the house generally smells terrible. But part of the reason...so that's the status we found it. We are concerned about safety, just because the house is not being entered into on a daily basis. I personally don't know when exactly this all started to happen, whether these were ongoing or just as a result of the 2016 flooding. But one day I did just come into the home and it started to...the ceiling had fallen and things like this. And in part, that's a result of not being used on a daily basis, so it is a concern. But also being at the corner of the campus and thinking about some long-term strategy in terms of how the municipal campus will be evolving, it seems like an appropriate time to take care of the home and demolish the home. The county land bank has offered, through some of the funding that they have available, to allow us to convey the property to them, they will demolish the home to the standards that we hold, including getting rid of the garage and the driveway, and restoring the property to a grass lot, and then transferring the property back to city ownership, meaning it comes at no cost...the demolition comes at no cost to the city. So this is circumventing what I would consider the normal process, which is where I come to, asking for approval to seek demolition funding, but because this is a special case where the home poses some level of security and safety concern.
Mr. Rock?
I do have some questions for you. Thank you.
Sure.
How can we ensure that the property will come back into the city's hands after the demolition?
Because the county land bank doesn't want to keep the property.
I understand that.
They've already set us conveyance agreements, draft conveyance agreements, with the understanding that they will transfer it back to us as soon as the demolition's done. That's the intent of this process.
Because I know there has been probably decades in the world to get the four houses to create this campus, municipal campus. And if that ended up in a different hands outside of the city, that monopolizes that person, you know what I mean?
Sure.
So I wanted to be able to ensure that it would go back to U.A.'s hand.
Yes.
I do want to thank you for trying to get demolition funding for this for years. And I would see tarps over, similar on property, and we need to do better than that. So I'm glad that we're finally doing something about that. So you were saying that the, because of special circumstances, the county land bank would actually demolish it at no cost to us?
Correct. Because we intend to retain it for municipal use.
Okay.
That's one of the factors that they said would allow them, and because we've not gone to them before, cities are allowed to use this type of process. And because we've not gone to them before, they're willing to do this for us.
Okay. Thank you. And I know there's future plans in the works for decades from now, how this could be a municipal campus, but in the interim, what's the plan for the property? You said a grass lot, but it is a corner lot.
Can we just?
What is that plan? Are there plantings? Are there going to be, is it going to become a parking lot for city vehicles? What is your plan for that?
There is no plan.
Currently, there is no plan because step one is demolishing the home.
Okay.
It's not to say that we're not, we wouldn't be open to considering what to do with the lot, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but to simply say that step one is really the safety and the concern for getting the home down. To my knowledge, there's not any plan for step two, but that's, that can be a discussion point.
That would, that would be a fair assessment. I mean, we have batted back and forth, different ideas, one being, could we put in a parking lot? There would not be a very big parking lot if we did.
And I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I, and part of this is also because the detective bureau does use a portion of not only the parking lot, a community park, but they've also, from time to time, parked one or two cars in the driveway of this house. And one of the struggles internally is, you know, we're giving up a couple of parking spaces that our detective bureau uses by taking out this driveway. Also, the garage is used for storage. The garage is still secure, unlike the rest of the house. However, it would be unusual for us to demolish a house without taking the driveway and garage as well. And I'm concerned how it would look as a member of the community to see a vacant lot that has just a driveway and garage on it. I don't think that's an example we want to be setting for the city. It's going to be, we're going to have to figure out a new home for some of the items that are stored in the garage. There are a number of things that are still in the house that are of historic value if they can be salvaged. I've seen the condition of some of these items. The amateur historian in me is saddened by much of what I've seen in there. There was one item in particular that I did feel compelled to pull out, which was a memorial plaque to former councilman and law director Sugarman, who passed away in the early 70s. And it was a plaque bearing the names of council members and then Mayor Konigsberg, but Burl Rothschild's name was on there, Jeffrey Friedman's name was on there. And, you know, when you memorialize someone, and then the plaque ends up in a moldy room in a house that the city for years has allowed to reach this point, there's just something that felt sad and disrespectful to me about, about that. I never knew Mr. Sugarman, of course. I would have been a child when he passed away. But the plaque is now sitting in the mayor's office. I've cleaned all the mold and everything off of it, and hopefully it's not, you know, affecting my respiratory system. But there were a number of items, our original Tree City USA plaque, which Mr. Precorni and I were trying to find. For 40 years, we've been a Tree City USA, and the original plaque where you put all the items is in there and in just utter disarray, not, I don't think it's salvageable. Things like that are still in the house. Every AAA award the city ever won that Mayor Rothschild thought were worthy of keeping and framing, and they're in the house. Things like that.
Mrs. Cameron?
Young man, why did you not include the second house? That's been the subject of much debate.
Are you referring to the yellow house next door?
Indeed.
That is a great question, and we are now renaming the yellow house the Storage House. We moved, so the building department has a lot of plans and files that they're required to keep per records retention schedule. And because of how confined the building department currently is in the building house, they are using the yellow house next door to the corner house.
Okay. So it is, there is a city use for the house still?
That's correct.
That requires us to maintain it at a degree that I would hope would transcend this sad story?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I would, I would agree, Mrs. Cameron, that administration needs to give greater focus to monitoring these homes that are used for storage purposes, because they are not, they are not made to be not monitored. And they need to be monitored, especially after storms and for water leakages and so on. And nothing will take a building down like water that is not routed away. And that's what happened here at this, at the white corner house.
Oh, God.
Yes. Mrs. Weiss.
Yeah, thank you. So I also share in Councilwoman Cameron's statement with, that we, we need to make sure that we monitor this yellow house. I'm not sure what happened with the white house. And just like I know Councilman Sims always says, we never want to tear down a house if we don't need to, even if it's city-owned.
Right.
How did you get it, get the demolition so fast? It usually takes months, a year. I mean, how did that happen so fast?
I think, I think it was just right time, right place. Because, again, because we do intend to long-term use this for municipal use, it's not going to sit as a vacant lot in the middle of a city block or, you know, residential block. But because this has a dedicated end use, as us, the city, that, you know, allowed the land bank to feel comfortable with the fact that their money is being put to good use.
And then, did they give you a timeframe?
They did not. So that's, we need the approval first, and then we can start signing conveyance forms and things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Any further questions? Mr. Weisman?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't find the section now, I've been looking on the land bank's website. I'm pretty sure the law requires them to offer the demolished property to the local municipality.
That's correct.
Before they can do anything else with it. That's, the whole design is to get them to get rid of properties and send it back to municipality. So to my colleague's question, it's really not the, my understanding is that there's not even a danger of them taking it and selling it to somebody else. That's why I think we're getting it pushed through and demolished so quickly, because it's a property that we own, so they're assisting us, and that's really one of their main functions.
Correct. And we also have an agreement signed with the land bank to that effect.
Yes, yes. So perhaps next time, you can give us a copy of that agreement along with your packet. It's going to make it easier to digest.
Sure.
But thank you for the packet that you gave us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Weisman. Any further questions for Mr. Grogan Myers?
They hit real parquet.
We don't really, does the open forum portion of the meeting is? Yes. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we authorize the transfer of the parcel land known as 3950 Silsby Road, parcel number 722-17-055 from the City of University Heights to the Cuyahoga County Land Reutilization Corporation as a public nuisance parcel for the purpose of being demolished.
On emergency?
On emergency.
Okay.
That's what I meant to say.
Yes. We have a motion by Mr. Weisman saying all that and on emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
If there is none, then we'll take two votes. First, on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And on the main motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Next item is Item G, Ordinance Number 2018-46, levying a special assessment on all designated properties served by streetlights at the rate of $1.05 per front foot for the tax year 2018 on emergency. Mr. Goff, would you speak on this?
As we had discussed in the Finance Committee beforehand, originally, we're seeking increase in the footage based upon the low fund balance in the street lighting, as well as that the current rate that we had for this current year and prior years of 70 cents per front foot had brought in for this year, $168,000, although our expenses are typically in excess of $200,000 and closest $210,000 for street lighting, and thus gaining to increase of the revenue to try to make up for that shortage. It was my understanding in the Finance Committee that the Finance Committee wishes to make an alteration to the dollar amount per foot.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Goff. There were two changes to special assessments. One was to increase the special assessment for streetlights to $1.05 for front foot. The second was to reduce the special assessment, which is Item I, for spraying, planting, maintaining, and removal of shade trees from 80 cents to 70 cents. Council does not want to tax residents any higher without a great deal of discussion, understanding that the Finance Director is trying to normalize the budget and the amounts of money coming into these special funds. So in the Finance Committee, we agreed for 2018, because this is due immediately, that we would amend the special assessment for streetlights to 80 cents per front foot and allow the reduction for trees, tree spraying, to go down to 70 cents. So the dollar amount is going to continue to be $1.50 across the two levies. Effectively, there's no change. We're just changing the way the money is coming into the funds and which fund receives a certain dollar amount. So I would like to make a motion to amend Ordinance G to levying a special assessment on all designated properties served by streetlights at the rate of 70 cents, no, 80 cents.
80 cents.
Thank you. 80 cents per front foot for the tax year 2018 on emergency. This is something the Finance Committee discussed among other items, so can we answer any questions about that discussion?
Okay. We, okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Partey to amend ordinance, proposed ordinance Number 2018-46, so that the, so that the 70 cents would not be increased to $1.05, but rather to just 80 cents.
80 cents.
80 cents.
Correct.
And we have a second by Mr. Sims.
And this is just to amend the motion, not to pass?
Right.
So it actually doesn't have to be on emergency? We're just amending the motion?
Correct.
My mistake.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Okay. If there is none, we'll take a vote then on the amendment. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll on the amendment?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Aye.
Okay. The ordinance as proposed is now amended to 80 cents instead of $1.05. That carries. So now we still have the main ordinance in front of us. Is there any further discussion?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass Ordinance 2018-46, levying a special assessment on all designated properties served by streetlights at the rate of 80 cents per front foot for the tax year 2018 on emergency.
Okay. Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mrs. Partey, second by Mr. Sims. Is there any further discussion on Ordinance Number 2018-46 as amended? Okay. If there is none, we'll take two votes. First is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Ordinance passes as amended, 80 cents. Next item on the agenda is Item H, Ordinance Number 2018-47, levying a special assessment against property within the city's sewer fund to maintain, repair, and reconstruct the sewage system and water lines within the city of tax year, for the tax year 2018. This is on emergency. Mr. Goff?
As I had noted to the Finance Committee, due to the way this particular special assessment has historically been organized, I do not have time to do, in my mind, an adequate analysis of it. So given the healthy fund balance that we have, I'm recommending no change from last year.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Mrs. Cameron?
How much is the assessment?
The assessment?
That we're not changing.
Actually, I have to go back and read through the actual ordinance itself. It, different types of houses have different ways individual ones are being assessed. That's why it was a little more complicated, not straightforward.
Okay.
As the analysis I did for the others.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah. But Section 2 here, Mrs. Cameron, of the proposed ordinance goes over the different amounts based upon whether it's a one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling.
Oh, I see.
Multifamily or apartment structure against elementary institution, school, church, unit of commercial property.
All right.
Undeveloped land, and so on. So, but I think the key thing here is, is that this would maintain the previous rate, so it's not a tax increase to simply maintain what we have here.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2018-47, levying a special assessment against property within the city sewer fund to maintain, repair, and reconstruct the sewage system and water lines within the city for tax year 2018 on emergency.
Okay. We have a motion on emergency by Mrs. Partey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take two votes. First, on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss? Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Next is Ordinance Number 2018-48, levying a special assessment for improving the streets of the City of University Heights, Ohio, by the spraying, planting, maintaining, and removal of shade trees thereon at 70 cents per front foot for the tax year 2018. This is on emergency. Mr. Goff?
I had previously recommended to Finance to reduce it from the 80 cents of the prior year to 70, which is what Finance had recommended as well. Other than that, remains the same.
Yes. And again, noting with this adjustment, there is no net increase in taxes when it comes to special assessments.
That is correct, when it offsets against the one for street lighting.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Goff? Any discussion or motion?
Okay, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we pass Ordinance 2018...
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, thank you. Levying a special assessment for improving the streets of the City of University Heights, Ohio, by the spraying, planting, maintaining, and removal of shade trees thereon at seventy cents per front foot for the tax year 2018 on emergency. And eighty cents should probably be marked out, at least on the agenda.
Right, it does say eighty written out, but then seventy in the numeral, so...
But it should be noted in the ordinance. It is marked out, so...
Yes, yes. Very good. Section noted. Okay. All right, motion by Mrs. Pardee, second by Mr. Wiseman. Is there any further discussion on this motion? If there is none, we will take two votes. First on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Motion carries. Turning the page. Item J, Resolution 2018-49, accepting a Bureau of Workers' Compensation firefighter exposure to environmental elements grant in the amount of $6,916.25 for protective equipment on emergency. Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this was one of two grants applied for from the Bureau of Workers' Comp. This is for the exposure to environment with relation to cancer prevention and the fire service. We have the vendor picked out for these materials. We're going to be buying protective hoods and gloves. We're just waiting to receive the funds from VWC, and then we'll complete that transfer.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chief Perko. Are there any questions?
I have a question, but I do want to, as I always do, commend the chief on his efforts to go out and find resources to help support our fire department. Appreciate you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sims, and ditto. Does anybody have any further questions or comments for Chief Perko or on this agenda item? And if not, is there a motion?
So, I would move that we approve Resolution 2018-49, accepting a Bureau of Workers' Compensation firefighter's exposure to environmental elements grant in the amount of $6,916.25 for protective equipment on emergency.
Very good. Mr. Sims, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'll take Mrs. Cameron this time. All right, so, motion by Mr. Sims, second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, two votes. First on the emergency.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Item K, Resolution 2018-50, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer on emergency. Mr. Goff.
This is a procedural item, following along with the tax budget that we had at the last meeting. This is the next step as part of the tax budget. The county came back to us and told us these are the maximum allowable property tax rates, which coincidentally are the same inside and charter mileage we already have, plus the bond, the property tax for the bond that we have outstanding. This is just a procedural vote, so that we can have the property taxes in place for next year without this vote. There is no property tax collection for next year for any levies for us. Any questions? It's usually pretty straightforward.
None here, Mr. Goff. Does anybody have any questions? If there are none, is there a motion?
Yes.
I would that we accept, that we approve Resolution number 2018-50, accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county's fiscal officer on emergency.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sims, a second by Mr. Wiseman. This is on emergency. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we take two votes. First on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next is Item L, Resolution 2018-51, accepting the Ohio Department of Public Safety Division of EMS Priority One Grant in the amount of $3,790 for EMS equipment and supplies on emergency. Chief Perko, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. We applied for this grant back in January to the state, provide state funding towards EMS supplies. All the money awarded from this grant, we're using to outfit the new ambulance. We have about half of that equipment in place now. We'll be prepared, hopefully, to put that ambulance on the road sometime this month.
Excellent.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments for Chief Perko?
Yes.
Mrs. Cameron.
Do you keep a running track of how many grants dollars you've identified for the city?
I have a list somewhere.
So, you're about a million-dollar man now, right? Got to be. Okay, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Any other questions or anything else for Chief Perko?
No, just once again, congratulations and thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll read the motion. That I recommend that we adopt the Resolution 2018-51, accepting an Ohio Department of Public Safety Division of EMS Priority One Grant in the amount of $3,790 for EMS equipment and supplies on emergency.
Motion by Mrs. Cameron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any further discussion? If there is none, we will take two votes. And the first is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you again, Chief Perko.
Thank you.
Next is Item M, Ordinance 2018-52, establishing the BCI and FBI Trust Fund for the purposes of accounting for the revenues and expenses of fingerprinting fees collected on behalf of the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation and the Federal Bureau of Criminal Investigation on emergency. Mr. Goff.
This is really an accounting matter with fees that we will be collecting for fingerprinting. A portion of that is owed back to both BCI and FBI and will not actually be our money at any point. We're holding it in trust for them, so it's simply a separate fund for doing the proper accounting for that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Chief Rogers, was there anything you wanted to add to this?
No, same no.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is related to the department updating our current fingerprint system and scanner. With the new system that we have, we're going to have the opportunity to complete and take part in what's becoming an industry standard, to provide a web check service to civilians for background checks. So, with this new software that we're getting while upgrading our equipment that's more than ten years old and well beyond its usable lifespan, we're going to offer this new service to the community. And obviously, the accounting factor related to the fees that are collected that go to either the state or the FBI has to be accommodated.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Rogers. Are there any questions for either Chief Rogers or Mr. Goff? Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you. So, this will be open to the community to use?
Correct. Will be part of the, what's called the web check community, where employees or prospective employees who need to do background checks for certain types of careers, be it in nursing or the medical field or being a security guard, when they log into the Attorney General's website, it now will show, going forward, once we get up and running with this equipment, a web check location where they can come to the police department instead of having to go to John Carroll or Beechwood or another city, and we can provide the service.
How much is it going to cost for a BCI and FBI?
The fees themselves that go directly to those organizations are either twenty-two or twenty-four dollars. The current rate for this type of background check starts around seventy dollars and can go up to well over a hundred dollars, depending on what fees we set up for it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief Rogers. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Are there any further questions or comments? If there are none, is there a motion?
I recommend that we approve Ordinance 2018-52, establishing the BCI and FBI Trust Fund for the purposes of accounting for the revenues and expenses of fingerprinting fees collected on behalf of OB, Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation, and Federal Bureau of Criminal Investigation on emergency.
Yes, there is a motion by Mrs. Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wiseman. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we take two votes. The first is on the suspension of the rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Thank you, Chief Rogers. Next is Item N, motion to authorize the purchase of a Mack LR64 cabin chassis with, should say, twenty-five yard Heil Durapack 5,000 rear loader rubbish packer from Bell Equipment Company in an amount not to exceed $222,818.84. Mr. Pecorni, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a purchase to replace the 21-9 truck, our Beechwood, what we call our Beechwood truck, which is a 1989 crane carrier. It's a twenty-yard rubbish packer. Pardon me. It has reached its useful life. We're not able to use it much over the road anymore. We used to be able to drive it with brush down to Cleveland Heights, but now that we're bringing our brush and yard waste to Kurtz in Independence, this truck is not roadworthy for driving up and down those Cuyahoga Valley hills. So, this truck has been pretty much out of service for the last several months. It was in our budget, the capital improvement funds, and we had discussed purchasing a rubbish truck at both the Service and Utilities Committee and the Finance Committee earlier in the year. This item was in that item, in that discussion and budgeted for. So, I'm recommending that we purchase it through the NJPA, which is the National Joint Powers Alliance Purchasing Consortium under a state contract, or it's not really, it's a federal contract number, at the total cost of $222,818.84.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Are there any questions? Mr. Rock?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Looking at the 2018 budget that says final budget, and under the capital improvements, I have a line item here for rubbish truck for $180,000. Is that the one you're referring to?
That is correct.
So, why is this a difference of $42,000? Is there a difference?
The main difference is, in the estimate, we had estimated based upon the rubbish truck we had purchased last year, which was a Freightliner with a raised cab. This is made by Mack, and it's a low-entry cab. We found that with the Beechwood truck and with the other Mack trucks that we have, the low-entry works better for yard waste when getting in and out of the truck constantly. The rubbish trucks that we have on the sanitation route, you can climb into them, the truck stays stationary, parked for a while when you're out operating it, and then you move it a block or so, and it's stationary again. The operation for the yard waste collection is stopping at every tree lawn, collecting waste. So, the low-entry truck offers the man a much easier way to get in and out of the vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pecorni, this is a new truck.
Yes, correct.
So, it's a 2018 model?
That is correct.
And is this the kind where we order it now, but they don't finish it till next June or something like that?
Well, in this particular case, the models are being pre-built and packaged. So, we went to Heil because we were, last year's vehicle had a twenty-five yard Heil 5,000 Durapack back. We wanted the same back. Speaking with the manufacturer, they said we are pre-manufacturing those with the low-entry Mack vehicle, and they should be available in a two-month period instead of a six-month period.
Excellent.
By the winter.
Right, so, we spec'd it around that.
Excellent. And we have another truck we're phasing out?
Correct, the old Beechwood truck, which was a 1986 model. What happened to that? That's currently parked by the garage, but we're not using it because we can't drive it to Independence.
Now, it's a planter.
A large one, yes.
Will we be able to capitalize it or?
No, we have not. We will probably put it on Gov. Deals for auction. Okay.
For those of you who look at the trucks riding around our community, this would be the red or orange-ish truck?
This is white.
Oh, it's white.
With a red and blue stripe on it.
That's what I'm thinking of, the red there. Okay. But you haven't seen it lately because...
No.
Right. Okay. Mrs. Weiss?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Do you have any idea how much you think we're going to be able to get for that, if anything?
I really don't know. In the auction, it goes almost for scrap to $100,000. It's amazing what they do with some of those auctions. One of the last crane carriers, I believe, we received $14,000 for it, and it was one of those that everybody looked at as a rust bucket and said, please get it off the road.
I'm just thinking if we could recoup much of that $40,000 overage, because that's, seems like a lot of money that was not in the budget.
That's correct. Technically, this is the last vehicle in the service department's capital equipment for 2018, and if you added up all the overs and unders for all the equipment, we would be looking at about a $24,000 increase this year. So, that's the number we'd be looking to make up.
Just that, just so I'm clear, we have two types of trucks. One is lower for the leaf collection and the recycling, where they can get in and out of the truck fast. And then this one is for the garbage, where they're sitting stationary. They don't have to get in and out so fast, so it's higher.
It's actually the other way. This one is more expensive because it is the low-entry that you get in and out of. The less expensive one is the raised cab that they use for regular rubbish, garbage.
So, I know this is going to be hard to think about, but minute-wise, for them to jump into the higher one to save $40,000, is there a way to estimate that?
It's not really just a minute estimation. It's a manpower-type estimation of actually climbing and physical ability and how you feel at the end of the day after you've climbed in and out of the truck a couple hundred times.
Let me add another item to that, putting on my HR hat for a moment. There is the risk that we have associated with if they're constantly getting in and out of that raised position, it's a very large increase to the risk of they're going to have an injury on a worker's comp claim.
And there's a fatigue factor, as I was expressing.
So, in a lot of ways, it would be one of those ergonomic things of we're making it easier for the workers so they can be more productive. We're making it easier on the worker's body to reduce risk elsewhere.
I think it's worth the forty-two Gs.
Okay.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Mrs. Cameron?
Yes, Mr. Pecorni, could we not utilize the older, the Beechwood model? Can't you just sit it on the street during weekends of mayhem and use it to collect for people to put their trash in?
Well, the vehicle still needs to go over the road, so we take our recycling down to Twinsburg, we take our garbage down to Glen Willow, and we take our brush and leaves down to Independence.
So, we still...
So, either way, we're heading fairly far south, and in most cases, we're either on the highway or we're traveling up and down the hills of the Cuyahoga River Valley.
Oh, okay. So, and I'm assuming there's no way to fix out a receptacle that could be easily transferred from one truck to another?
I don't think there would be a benefit in trying to transfer and handle the material twice.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I just have one more question. How many bids do we get for this truck?
Only one because we were going through the National Joint Powers Alliance to purchase it, which is a consortium.
You think that's the cheapest bid that we were going to get?
Uh, it is for this truck manufactured with the Heil back.
I'm just having a hard time with $40,000.
It's basically a state bid is the way they do it.
This is...
It's gonna be okay.
No, it's $65,000 in this meeting tonight that we're over already.
Yeah. Well, we'll find a way to make it up.
I'm glad you're thinking that.
Or you can get the fire guy to go back there and find us a couple of more grants.
No, I have to agree with my colleague. I had a hard time with that too when I first saw that in our pack. I thought it was $42,000 overage. When council worked very hard at the beginning of the year to set this budget and the capital improvements for the year, we've, we've wanted to make new purchases for new vehicles and try to trim it down as much as we can. So I, I, I feel your frustration with that.
Yes, Mr. Sims.
And I share my colleagues' concern, but I don't completely share their concerns because I know that when we set a budget, even though we may list individual items within that budget, there is the opportunity and the expectation that the directors or the mayor will manage within those budgets. So what I'm looking at, and my greatest concern, is that you manage to the number of the overall budget. And I think what you said is that based on what you know now, that overall, we might be over about $24,000.
That is correct.
And then I just wanted to give one clarification. So it's not 42. It's 42 for the individual item, but overall, based on what we budgeted for capital improvements, is 24. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I just want to get one clarification. And I think it would help me and might help my colleagues in terms of, on the individual items. When, because I'm the chair of the Certificated Utilities Committee, and we did go over this, and I saw the exact same thing that you brought to the table. So when we set the, when we set the budgets for the individual items within your capital improvement budget, where do those numbers come from? I mean, so in this example, you thought it would be 180, and it actually turned out to be 222. So where'd you get the 180?
The 180 was based upon the previous rubbish truck purchased last year, which also had the Heil back, but it had the different cab. It was a freight liner, raised cab. So we made the decision that it would be ergonomically better to have the employees collecting this. I should have considered that at the beginning of the year and looked for an estimate on a low-entry truck.
Okay. And then one thing that I would ask, you know, in the future, when we do have items that are in excess of what was presented in the budget, could you sort of give a little brief memo so that we will understand in advance? And you could also help us understand where we are overall?
Can do.
Yes. That would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Are there any further questions or comments about this proposal? Is there a motion?
Yes. Yes, Mayor. I move that we adopt a motion to authorize the purchase of a Mack LR64 cabin chassis with a 25-yard Heil Dura-Pac 5,000 rear loader rubbish packer from Bell Equipment Company in an amount not to exceed $22,218.84.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Cameron, second by Mr. Sims. Is there any further discussion? Okay. If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Well, since we're 24% over budget, I'll have to say nay.
24%. He said 24,000 over...
The 222 over the 180, there's a difference in 24%.
Over an entire budget.
Yes, yes. I mean, we're, we're in voting procedure now, so...
Please.
Mr. Wiseman? Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecorni?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
It's gonna be okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is Item O, motion to authorize seeking bids for the 2018-1 tree pruning and removal contract. Uh, Mr. Pecorni, you again have the floor.
Uh, this is a request to authorize bidding for tree removal and pruning. This list of trees, which I attach to the request, is mostly emergency removals. There are several silver maple trees around town, which has aged to the point which we're worried are not going to make it through the winter without dropping many of their branches. So, uh, you'll see much of the list is on raymont, and those are all old silver maples. And the rest of the list are various trees around the city, which we've deemed to be hazardous. So it looks like on the list, there are approximately 32 removals, and only four of these will be pruned.
Wow.
We will be bringing another list of trees for pruning in the winter sometime in the next month or two, our regular program.
Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Are there any questions? Start with Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the total for these is, we don't know the total. He was putting out for bid.
Correct. Yes, estimated cost is $28,000.
And so, so how do we determine if a tree should come down? Just if it's diseased or if it's...
I've had the arborist look at each of these trees. We've looked at them, actually, the, most of the raymont trees we looked at and pruned about five years ago. And now we're looking at them again. And if we've seen that type of decline in a five-year period, he makes the determination that yes, that tree needs to go.
And these are all trees that are on tree lawns?
Correct.
Because we put them in.
Somebody did here.
Ostensibly. So I, I'm asking because there was a, the woman, the resident here talking about the tree and her tree lawn at the beginning of the meeting. There's also another tree, particularly, there's one on Churchill that I'm familiar with, where the tree itself is, the trunk of the tree is the actual size of the tree lawn. So it touches the curb on one side and it touches the sidewalk on the other side. And the sidewalk pad that the tree is touching is about three inches above the next sidewalk pad. Clearly, it's that tree causing the problem. Is there any mechanism for us to review this kind of situation?
There is, and we review those situations almost on a daily basis. However, in most cases, if the tree is healthy and carries its regular foliage, looks like it's going to survive another five years within our tree program, we will either schedule it for pruning or we will assist the resident with root cutting the roots in order so that they can get the sidewalk back down to level, but we will not remove the tree.
Okay. That makes perfect sense. Talking about the assisting residents with, was that we just peel the concrete pad back and...
And we hire our tree contractor to come out with a root grinder and grind down about 10 inches to remove all those roots so that they can then lay a base and put the sidewalk on top of the base.
Okay. But they can do that without pouring a new pad or is it just not work?
Uh, in some cases, they can. Some of them, they saw cut the joints of the sidewalk, flipped, flipped them back onto the front lawn, do that work, and then flipped them back onto the level base. But in most cases, it's easier just to repour the sidewalk.
Right. And that's at the city's cost?
No, it's at the homeowner's cost.
So what the assistance that we provide the residents is?
Removing the roots of the tree so that they can get their sidewalk back.
I just wanted to just make sure. So the resident deals with the concrete. We would, at our cost, cut the roots and get them out of the way?
Correct.
But it'll be up to the resident to deal with the new, whatever the damage to the concrete is or replacing it?
The sidewalk has to be removed prior to root grinding.
Got it. Okay. All right. And would that be part of this or something else entirely?
That would not be part of this actual tree pruning and removal project. It would be separate, but it's something we do on a regular basis.
Great. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Uh, Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you. So I know that I've been back and forth with you about this dead tree on Green Road.
Yes.
And I know that it's not on the tree lawn, but it's definitely a hazard. And since these, this company is coming out to do this anyways, and the owner has not done anything in the last, I don't know how many months we've been going back and forth, is there a way that they could do it and we can charge the owner?
There is a method for doing that. It's called an abatement process. We declare it a nuisance. We then send the resident or property owner a notice telling them that there is a nuisance on their property that needs to be removed. And if they don't do it within the 30-day period, then we go out and get a bid on a tree contractor to actually do that removal. I usually give them a second notice at that point to let them know that they're going to be assessed for that work. And then we send the contractor out to remove those trees, and we put it on the assessment pro, uh, list.
Can we do that? For the, I mean, this, this is already a, I mean, at least six months.
We have started that process already.
You have?
And we have the arborist's letter. We have notified the, the property owner, and the next step will be to send the contractor out.
Thank you.
Is this the one where we also made the phone call?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Because we also wanted to, because there was some question about whether the notice was received, so we made a phone call to the property owner in question and also made sure that he was aware that the notice...
I've also made sure he was aware. Nothing was done. I'll tell you why. And Jeff knows, in Cleveland Heights, I think it was like five years ago, a tree fell on a pedestrian walking and almost killed him. And this is right by the sidewalk. It could fall. Any, the tree is completely dead, and people walk there all the time.
Mr. Mayor?
We will pursue that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Cameron?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm assuming that the tree that I mentioned to you this past week is following a similar...
Yes, it is.
Um, thank you.
Similar path.
Yes.
Yes. We will be notifying the property owners shortly. We have not had the arborist look at those trees yet, though. There's two trees, one in the front, that's a pine tree that's twisted and split, and one that's a dead ash tree against the house.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. And then, Mr. Pecorni, I do have one item. I mentioned this this morning, so this is not a new item to you, but just so I'm saying it on the record. For item number 28 at 2637 Charney on Claridge Oval, there are actually two crab-apple trees that we're looking at having included on this bid. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rock?
Okay. Um, so all of these properties would be considered for new trees in the next tree planting program, correct?
Hopefully, yes.
Why hopefully? Why...
Uh, because if, they have to come down in a timely manner and have the trunk roots and everything ground out in order to actually get into the planting program. If that work isn't all complete at the time we're planting, then I won't be able to put them in the planting program.
So, but they would be on the following year's planting program for sure?
Yes, yeah. Right. They always go on the next planting.
Okay. That's what I wanted to be sure of. When does that planting program begin?
Uh, we are working on a list of new trees to plant right now.
Okay.
At the same time, as I was telling you, I'll be coming in with a request to bid fall pruning, which goes through the winter. I will also be coming in with a request to purchase and plant trees.
Okay. Off the subject, we've talked about planting trees on the meeting in Lawrence Center Room as a circle.
They will be on that list.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Is there any further questions for Mr. Pecorni or discussion on this item?
Who's this calling to?
No, Mayor. I'll make a motion to authorize the seeking of the bids for the 2018-1 tree pruning and removal contract.
Second.
Okay. Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Rock, a second by Mr. Wiseman. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecorni?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Item P is a motion to purchase two 2018 Ford SUVs via State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program from Lebanon Ford for administrative and for the fire prevention officer in the amounts of $28,369 and $29,299 for a total amount not to exceed $57,668. Interim Chief Bob Perko, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council, this is, we have an opportunity to get ahead of our fleet maintenance and replacement, replacement schedule. Uh, it's currently well behind in various areas. Uh, these vehicles are on the five-year plan that were provided earlier on in the year. However, they weren't on the capital for this year. We had a capital improvements totaling $81,000. Uh, we were fortunate enough to free up via the grant process and donations made at council meetings here for other equipment in the department. So we want to reallocate about $80,000 of that $81,000 that was budgeted for these two vehicles for their replacement.
That's kind of hard, yeah.
Thank you. I, I know there, there was something else also about the timing. Did you want to get into that now?
Sure.
Okay. Would you please?
Uh, the company, which is on the next agenda item, Hall Public Safety, who outfits all of our vehicles with the lighting and radio equipment, IT needs, they gave us a notice that this platform of vehicle is going to be discontinued after the 2019 model. They're actually going to cut production sometime within the next week or two.
The 2018 model, right?
Uh, no, it should be noted in the agenda here that these are 2019s.
Oh, okay.
On both Items P and Q.
All right. I'm sorry. Please proceed.
And the new model is supposed to be a hybrid with significant cost increase as well as some difficulties with the outfitting of the ancillary equipment.
To put another way, because it's a new vehicle, the ancillary equipment hasn't necessarily been fully designed yet. So when you're trying to outfit a brand-new vehicle, the, uh, the accessories and outfitting may not be fully developed and realized, and therefore you, they're, they don't have in stock necessarily or have developed yet the items that you need for the build-out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Very good. Are there any questions for Chief Perko? Mr. Rock?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We did discuss this in the safety committee and made the recommendation to move forward with these purchases. Um, at first, we were hesitant because it was not part of the original capital expenditure of 2018, but because the department has secured many grants in the amount of that $81,000, we didn't want to leave that money on the table. So we did discuss this, uh, these particular vehicles at a prior meeting and did make the recommendation.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Mrs. Weiss?
Uh, thank you. How old are our current vehicles?
These that we're looking at?
Ones we're replacing, yeah.
So in the memo, it lists a 2007 Jeep Cherokee and a 2008 Chevy Trailblazer.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
Both of them have been in a variety of vehicle collisions. Uh, one has excessive mileage, and they both have had ongoing repairs. Uh, we'd like to replace one of them for sure, and can, we're considering repurposing the additional one for non-emergency use.
And will you put the one you're replacing on the auction?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Are there any further questions for Chief Perko? If there are none, is there a motion?
I would move to purchase two 2019 Ford SUVs via the State Walk-to Purchasing Program from Lebanon Ford for administrative and for the fire prevention officer in the amounts of $28,369 and $29,299 for a total amount not to exceed $57,668.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wiseman. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Wiseman?
Since the chief informed us that these are in fact 2019 vehicles, do we have to change the agenda or at least, I know Mr. Sims mentioned it in his motion. I don't know if it matters. The chief, no, it matters.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Is there any further discussion on this motion? If there is none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the rule.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Pecorni?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
But don't go anywhere, because Item Q is motion to purchase equipment from Hall Public Safety for the two 2019 Ford SUVs for administrative and for the fire prevention officer in the amounts of $5,835.09 and $12,160.62 for a total amount not to exceed $17,995.71. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, as I indicated, we have used Hall Public Safety for a long number of years. Uh, they'll be outfitting vehicles with lighting, IT needs, our mobile data computers, as well as the radio communications. Um, two of them are different. One, one vehicle being used more for administrative functions and the other for emergency response. Some more equipment, more lighting, um, and these lighting packages and IT needs come cheaper than what Ford can provide us even on the state bid pricing.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there any questions? Or comments? Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that we purchase, approve the purchase of equipment from Hall Public Safety for the two 2019 Ford SUVs for administrative and fire prevention officer in the amounts as listed but not to exceed $17,995.71.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Cameron, second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, please call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
All right. I have on good authority that out in Newburgh, they had items all the way to Item Y, so I'm feeling pretty good right now about where we are in our agenda. So, thank you, Chief. Item R is motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel legal and real estate matters. I can tell you that there are personnel and real estate matters that the council and I need to discuss. So I would ask for a motion at this time to enter into an executive session at the conclusion of this meeting to have those discussions.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Wiseman. Couple of seconds, I'll go with Mr. Rock this time. Any discussion done? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
I guess so. Yes, hi.
Hi.
Okay. Mrs. Weiss, did you vote? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thanks. All right, we will hold that executive session. But first, we have director's reports. Finance?
Considering we just had a finance meeting this afternoon, which feels like this morning at this point, I will try to keep this brief with the items I think need to be on the record. 2017 audit and the GAAP conversion, so we can have the audit, we've received extensions from the auditor's state's office for both of those. The GAAP conversion, which is our unaudited financial statements, are to be completed by September 25th. That is the deadline. Thank you in part to the consultant, Rita Drew, that the mayor had hired with your consent earlier this year to work on bankrupt conciliations. I used her to finish those up for 2017 as well as then to work on getting items together for that GAAP conversion. I have to transmit that information over to the GAAP converter this week, but we can meet that deadline without a problem. The auditors will be back in starting Monday next week in order to meet the deadline of October 31st. 2019 appropriations, one thing regarding those that I had missed in finance, I do think is important because it impacts your timeline, is the timeline for doing budget meetings. Looking at trying to have everything with department heads this month so that the first two weeks or so of October, we can kind of work on gelling together a plan administration-wise. So the week of the 15th or so, the mayor can look at it and adopt it, and then that would hopefully get the council the last two weeks of October.
We only need two readings, not three.
So if you're going to give me additional time, I appreciate it. I'm used to longer timetables with other entities.
No, this is great.
And then I was originally under the impression that we needed three readings appropriations.
Just two.
The law director corrected me this morning on that. So I'm looking ambitious, and if we push that back, that timetable a little bit, I understand you only need two weeks. Basically, if we get it to you by early November, we're good then, is my understanding.
You can stick with your original plan. We just don't need three readings.
Okay.
But it's fine.
Yeah, early November sounds a little bit more realistic for me, if possible. So my goal is every year that we do current appropriations before the end of the year, I'm not a fan of temporary appropriations that only last until the end of March. And then the last item is, yes, there were some draft reports in there for August. They're incomplete since August is not truly complete yet, but I wanted to start letting council have an idea of where the finances sit, since I understand you haven't seen receiver reports in a while, as well as I want to start getting feedback from you as to any customized reports that we need to work on generating.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Goff. Director of Law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Research and Advocacy Center has filed two complaints with the city regarding violations of fair housing laws. In one case, it is alleged that the respondents refused to accept payment vouchers. In the other case, it is alleged that there was an unlawful inquiry into a protected status, discriminatory statements made, and a refusal to rent. City ordinance has required that the respondents be notified and afforded an opportunity to respond. The city's law department, by ordinance, must conduct an investigation and determine either, one, to dismiss the complaint as being unfounded; two, to hold a conciliatory hearing to attempt to mediate a solution; or, three, refer the matter to the city's fair housing board for a hearing. We are in the investigatory stage of each complaint at the present time. Second, Mr. McConville is in the process of preparing a code of regulations, conflict of interest policy, and sample resolutions relating to the Community Improvement Corporation for review and consideration at the September 17th Governmental Affairs Committee meeting. Those documents will be delivered to Council and Weiss later this week.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cicero. Mr. Wiseman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Cicero, the mayor recently reconstituted the city fair housing board.
Commission.
The city housing commission. Is that the body that's going to hear these complaints or just the law department?
Potentially. No.
Could be.
Under the ordinance, the law department, specifically the law director, must conduct the investigation, sort of as special prosecutor.
Right.
And then the law director determines, is there a basis? If so, attempt to do a conciliatory meeting and mediation.
Right.
Or refer it to a hearing before the housing commission.
Okay. And then, excuse me, then it's up to the complainants to decide whether or not to take it further, such as maybe something in front of the House of Rights Commission or private lawsuit if they choose.
Correct.
But these allegations are not against the city, they're against landlords in the city.
It's against landlords in the city.
Okay.
Correct. The city is not a party.
Right. I don't imagine, I'm not asking for details, but are these landlords in, I'll skip that question. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman.
I'm sorry.
We asked that question off the top of the head, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Public Safety, we'll start with Police. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there was a question?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Cameron.
I wanted to know, the people who made the complaint, did they do so because they were aware that we now have a reconstituted body to hear those complaints?
I have no knowledge of that. I believe it was just someone who was aware that the city has a process and has such an ordinance on its books.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Thank you, Mr. Cicero. All right, moving along to Public Safety, we'll start with Police. Interim Chief Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'd like to report on four items tonight. The first item being our recent police department, community engagement efforts. We had somewhat of a historical event occur, August 7th, which is recognized nationally in the law enforcement field as National Night Out. And what that is, is again, a national effort by law enforcement agencies to plan and coordinate with the community to have events where we can build positive relationships and camaraderie. So August 7th, we had our first-ever police-sponsored National Night Out event, which the feedback was tremendous. The event was very well attended. It was a very, very positive event. The recently-created Office of Community Policing did a tremendous job with planning the event, unlimited time with, you know, resources that may not, may be more prevalent going forward in the future, but they did a tremendous job on coordinating this event, and it was very positive and very successful. Again, our first-ever sponsored event where this type of program and National Night Out event actually started in the early 80s. So it's recognized nationwide, and it's something that we started this year. We're going to continue to build it going forward every year and plan to do so accordingly with the Office of Community Policing. Under community engagement events, the mayor touched on Coffee with the Cop is our next engagement opportunity that we're planning. October 3rd at Jack's Deli, Mike Cook, Communications and Civic Engagement Coordinator, will probably offer more specifics on that, but it will be our next engagement opportunity that Office of Community Policing is planning. We look to continue these events through the rest of the year. Also, the OCP will be coordinating with Mike Cook's office on a regular basis to enhance our engagement opportunities and our utilization of social media applications through our Office of Community Policing. Next item I'd like to report on is our Lexi Paul subscription that has been previously discussed at council meetings. In the past few weeks, I've attended multiple online orientations and webinars to familiarize with this subscription. At this rate, we plan on starting the implementation process around the week of September 20th. Again, this is an eight to six to eight-month process that it will take that amount of time to fully lexibilize our policies and get everything up to best practice and standards. So we will be starting the implementation process in buckets around the September 20th benchmark. An update on the new police vehicles that were approved and purchased in May. We recently obtained the vehicles in the week of August 13th, so now we're starting the process of obtaining all the necessary equipment and installation as well. And with those three vehicles, we hope to have them operational by the end of the year. And the last item is just an update on hiring. We're in the process of hiring three police officers, and those will be to fill the current vacancies on the department. That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Interim Chief Rogers. Are there any questions for the chief? Mr. Sims?
First of all, I want to commend the police department because I think that the visibility around the city is at a very high level. My question is how, at an extremely high level, and I think that's very important. And the one thing that I even noticed is that, I mentioned this at another council meeting, about the lights on the vehicles. I've noticed a few have been on, but you know, but not really on, and I think that that helps the residents and the public to see that we are actually patrolling our communities. But in terms of the more basic community engagement, and not for this year and not for tomorrow, but I was just wondering whether or not you have considered any type of initiatives such as walking the blocks or having some of our policemen on, I shouldn't say policeman, having some of our police on bicycles or anything like that.
Yeah, they do.
We currently have a bike unit with four officers and four bicycles. Special events you'll see them at, like National Night Out, obviously, but other things like Movie United Community Park, any type of opportunity we can use to get officers out on the bicycles. We've been really taking advantage of. I think we have more officers in the bike unit this year than we've ever had. And so we've, as much as possible, utilized that resource for engagement purposes in the community. But going forward, really, you know, I've talked about it at length, especially at the safety committee meetings, there is significant opportunity for engagement. It's just with the new Office of Community Policing, first year without long-term planning, there's only so much we can do, but we've been taking advantage of every opportunity, and we're going to continue to do so. So things like, I've talked about Shop with the Cop and other engagement opportunities, it's just planning for them.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Anything else for Interim Chief Rogers? Seeing none. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Interim Chief Perko, you have the floor. For a report.
Thank you, Mayor. As indicated earlier, Fire Department is also going through the hiring process. I wish it was a year ago that we were at the level we're at this time, but nonetheless, we are doing it now. I say it's been a tedious process. Ms. Thomas has helped us along the way. These are employees that we are looking to secure here for a minimum of 25 years in the city. So we take it very seriously. We've involved all the administrative officers, the Fire Department, like I said, Ms. Thomas, and as well as the Police Department. So it's a thorough process, but we should be hopefully making job offers probably in the month of October. With that being said, we're also going through the promotional process. This past Saturday, we had promotional testing for the rank of captain and lieutenant. We'll be placing both of those ranks and filling them as soon as that process is completed, probably also sometime October going into November. The Ladder Truck Committee has met numerous times since our last safety committee meeting. We have narrowed down to not only two different vendors, but two specific models within those vendors. We have been waiting with one vendor to do a fair comparison with them. Their truck is currently in Wisconsin. However, next week, it's planned to come to Macedonia, and we're trying to ensure that it makes its way over here. In short time after that, we'll be able to move forward a committee recommendation on which manufacturer we really want to look at and secure some final financing options. Then we'll bring it back to the safety committee after that. I think it was indicated earlier, Fire Department is going to be doing its first-ever open house on October 7th. Mr. Cook has been working with us to spread the word on that. I'll give you guys a couple flyers. You can feel free to share those with the community and businesses. We have plenty available made. We'll be working on that as well to pass them out ourselves. We intend to have some health screenings there from University Hospital. There'll be free food, safety demonstrations, and well as a tour of the firehouse and the vehicles. Last thing I wanted to mention was that September is the National Preparedness Month. Recommend looking at FEMA's webpage as well as the County Emergency Management page for tips on having an emergency plan. They have four themes for each week of the month. The theme for this week is to make and practice your plan. So it's all about organizing a plan with your family and having emergency contacts and what you should do in case of an emergency of something, say like a tornado. The Cuyahoga Emergency Management Agency is also hosting a preparedness event on this. It's at Strongsville Mall, September 22nd at noon. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Interim Chief Perko? Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, if you could have the committee, the Ladder Truck Committee, work with our finance director in terms of putting together some objective, non-salesman-based financing options. So when you bring us your recommendations, we'll have that kind of look see as well, because salesmen are always interested in giving you something that looks nice, but I'm interested in getting a more objective view of what the actual financing options are. We talked about leasing, but if you could work with our finance director and make that part of your presentation, it would certainly make it easier for us to decide which way to go.
Definitely.
Thank you. If I could comment on that real quickly, yes, that is part of our intention. My understanding is from what council has previously relayed to the interim chief, that you guys would like to see something in the five to 10-year range of leasing. I do think right now leasing is probably our best option without having a long-term spending plan, but at least one of the company financing wasn't that out of line. I believe it was in the low threes, which compared rather favorably to what we're actually getting on our CDs right now.
So I'm not interested in answering now. What I'd like to see is like an sort of objective breakdown.
Yes, we will.
If the machine is going to cost us a million dollars, you know, and we're leasing it, I, there's, I don't want to get into it now, but I would just like some objective views of the different financing options.
Yes.
Not just how many years we can lease, but what a purchase looks like, what doesn't look like, all that kind of stuff.
Yes, that is very much the intention.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Sure. Thank you, all of you. Are there any further questions? Thank you, Chief Perko.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, oh, yes. Oh, sure, sure.
I passed a flyer for Coffee with the Cop, and it was created, it created by, so you did a great job with the flyer.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, next up is Service. Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed earlier, in the next month or so, we're going to be working on the tree planting program, on the tree pruning program for winter. We will also be working on our fall preparedness so that we're ready to go. Leaves will start around October 15th. That's curbside collection of loose leaves. Prior to then, sometime in the next couple of weeks, we will get the city pool drained and winterized, and then we'll be working towards cleaning up the park and the other public properties for fall.
Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Are there any questions for Mr. Pecorni? Mr. Wiseman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pecorni, so my, the garbage truck parks in front of my house on Mondays to receive the garbage, which is fine. I'm glad to be giving my tree lawn or whatever to help the city. When they leave and it's 90 degrees and I go outside, it smells really, really bad. I've taken the pouring bucket of water bleach down there and sort of clean it out, so it's, I mean, it's really, it sounds extreme, but it's, it's a smell good. Do we have a street sweeper or something, or do we?
We do, and we use it pretty much every Friday to go around and clean the streets. But I'm not sure that by Friday, that's going to help you since you're on Monday's rubbish route.
On Monday, right, right. So it probably would mess you up to have them follow around like the day after and just do those streets, right, because they'd be out every day.
Usually, the guy that's driving the rubbish truck is the same guy that drives the street sweeper. So I don't know if I can get to do two things at the same time.
Is this the only complaint you've received about the?
Actually, I have not heard many complaints about the rubbish truck.
All right. Keep it to myself. Thank you. I don't want to mess up the whole city. So thank you, Mr. Pecorni.
Certainly.
Maybe the temperature will calm down.
That will help, along with some rain.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Wiseman. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mrs. Cameron.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pecorni, I want to thank you all for once again getting on top of, you in the building, inspector people, getting on top of the owner of the parcel that I live nearby.
Sure.
So that after you all made mention of what you found to be unacceptable maintenance, and they came right out and fixed it.
Talking about fence repairs?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Anything further for Mr. Pecorni? All right. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Okay, next director's report is Next Director's Report is Building Commissioner. Mr. McReynolds is on vacation, however, I do have a report from him that I will read now. Building Report. The Belfair Community is preparing to break ground for the new 12-bed inpatient pediatric psychiatric unit to be built on their campus. The groundbreaking is scheduled for September 28th at 9:00 a.m. At 10:00 a.m., there will be a reception and optional tours of the facility. So, that groundbreaking in is September 28th at 9:00 a.m. Work is continuing at the proposed Bibbidi-Bop Asian Cuisine Restaurant to be located at 13930 Cedar Road. Opening date is scheduled for sometime in early October. Jack's Deli at 14990 Cedar installed a new hood suppression system for their cooking area. As for Housing Report, during the two-month period from June 1st, 2018 through July 31st, 2018, a total of 590 housing inspections were performed by the staff. Because of these inspections, a total of 192 violation notices were delivered. Some of these notices had more than one violation listed. During the moratorium on rental fees, we have not collected rental fees, but are scheduling and performing rental inspections as normally we would. As you are aware, the moratorium is set to expire on September 14th unless further action is decided upon by this Council. Respectfully submitted, James McReynolds. Next report on the agenda would be Communications and Civic Engagement. I welcome to our council, Mr. Mike Cook.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Want to get everyone up to speed on one big picture item and a few of the individual projects that we're working on. The big picture, of course, is the new logo and the rebranding. You know, several of you have been involved in the, all the meetings on that. Since I've been on board, I've been part of two of them. I think we're getting closer, and once we do, I want to make sure that we're prepared to utilize the logo that we come up with. We're already working on revamping the website so it incorporates the designs and the fonts and the colors and the new logo. And then also, at the same time, I think we all want to add some additional functionality to the website so it isn't just a cosmetic change. And we've talked about adding components so people, residents, can pay online for big trash pickup and other things. And just adds some more functionality to the website so it isn't just something that they can look at every once in a while, but this is something that people return to often and actually serves more of a purpose. Also, with the logo, we'll incorporate them to our social media, and our hope is to launch a City Magazine in 2019, doing this three times a year. And first issue would focus on beautiful homes, but also be an additional part of a logo rollout. Individual projects, social media. We now have a City Instagram site, and per request of a couple residents, we're doing some more short-form videos to kind of get our message out on Facebook and on Twitter. And so far, I think that's been working pretty well. For the mayor's suggestion, we are relaunching some of our citizen committees on October 9th. We're going to hold, actually, a doubleheader here. At 6:30, it's going to be the Sustainability Committee, where we're going to focus on the issue of trash pickup in the city. And then following, at 7:30, we're going to have the Communications Committee meeting. So, just talking about ways that City Hall can better connect with residents. Like Chief has mentioned, Coffee With A Cop is a big focus. And I don't know how familiar everyone here is with that program, but I can talk about it briefly, but if you want to really get into it, they have a good national website, which is just coffeewithacop.com. Take a look at that. But I think the big thing they were trying to do with bringing this program to University Heights is, for the most part, someone, no matter where you live, your first interaction with a cop, for the most part, is a negative experience. You're either a victim of a crime, you've been accused of a crime, you've committed a crime, or you're being pulled over for speeding or running red lights. So, this will be, you know, a positive experience for residents to talk to police officers. No agendas, no speeches, just whatever's on their mind, whatever issues are concerned to them. And we'll see how this event goes on the 3rd, and assuming it goes well, we'll do it, you know, maybe two or three, four times a year. And let's see. Fire Chief mentioned the open house, so we're going to make sure that's promoted so we can get a big crowd for that. Mayor mentioned the Civic Awards. Right now, in the newsletter that goes out next week, we're going to start soliciting nominations and obviously any that Council has, you know, please let us know. And finally, part of this newly created position is, you know, the civic engagement part isn't just promoting civic events, but also kind of a constituent service type of thing. So, what I want to do is, Ms. Benson, after the meeting, I'd like to meet with you. You're talking about, you know, areas in the city that you should know about. I'd like to, if you would like, go on a tour with you of those areas and see who else I can bring along. That would be appropriate and be available, based on your schedule. We'll work on that. And the lady in yellow with the laundry list is loved, but I will get her name and give her a call there this week. Find out what that laundry list is and go through them one by one with the mayor and the rest of you, figure out what problems we could solve and what may be on our breast. So, that's it.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook, and welcome once more.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we have Economic Development. And before Susan Drucker proceeds with her report, I feel like a whole week, I mean, a full week has gone by since we, just by an accident of timing, introduced Susan Drucker as our Economic Development Director last week at the joint meeting with the School Board. But the one thing I have not done is actually sworn her in, so.
Oh!
So, I have her in both of office, and I'll meet you up there.
Marvelous.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name. Do solemn swear.
Sow.
To support the Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
The States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
The City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As Economic Development Director.
As Economic Development Director.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So, help me go.
So, help me go.
And you're signing here?
Mayor. Is she not the first person to have served in this capacity?
In our city, yes, she is. Susan Drucker is University Heights' first Economic Development Director, and we are honored.
So, for the best.
Yes!
Now that I'm sworn in, I guess I'm official to give a report before all of you. So, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the mayor. Thank you for this appointment. I am very excited to be a part of this administration, and thank you to Council. I look forward to working with all of you and the, all of the administration to give your reports. So, I have been here one week. It was an exciting first week. Basically, last week, I spent scheduling meetings with, starting the outreach of businesses in the community, surrounding areas, their economic development directors, to see what the adjacent communities are doing, because we'll be working together, as well as property owners and real estate brokers. I began updating the business directory. It was last updated in 2016. So, by updating the business directory, what we're doing is starting to do an inventory of all of the current active businesses throughout the community, as well as what vacant spaces we have. That's where the real estate brokers will be beneficial, sitting down with them, so that in these vacant areas, that's where I'll get the information about square footage, location, access points, how high a ceiling is. When people are looking for space, these are the questions they ask when they're calling an Economic Development Department. They want to know what the space is before they even invest the time to go out and look. So, that's, so we'll be doing the legwork for businesses that want to come into the city. Also, what we've been doing is compiling and updating the email list for the businesses, because one of the things is with the city newsletter, this way, the businesses have not been receiving that. So, they really haven't been a part of that. So, we want to engage the businesses and keep them included. So, when police and fire have these events, we want to make sure the businesses are aware of those events and just anything that's going on with the city, with Council, with the mayor, or any engagement activity. I've also been working with James. We've been reviewing the TIF. We do have a meeting scheduled with the county to, just so I'm brought up to speed on the TIF completely with, and we have that later on this week. And then I'm also working on the content for the webpage for, so that we have an Economic Development page, so people know to contact me directly for any of their business needs. So, that pretty much wraps up Week 1.
Wow! Well done!
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Susan, for Ms. Drucker?
All right, they're going out easy, honey, the first week, so that's, thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Great to have you here.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Okay. And then, Community Development, Mr. Grogan Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the ordinance earlier transferring, allowing the transfer of the property. I'll get started on that immediately, and it's been great. Today was my first day actually working with Ms. Drucker. I was on vacation last week, and there were a lot of productive conversations, and we have a lot of things to look forward to. On my plate, kind of coming forward, there are several grants that have come available through county and state funding, so I'll be working with the City Engineer. And there's also, what we're currently working on executing is CDBG grant, the next round of funding, which will come available next year. That application period will be opening soon. So, look for a date coming from us, setting up the next public hearing, so that we can solicit ideas for our grant application due sometime this fall, October, November, it looks like. And we, if awarded, would be executing the project next year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
From Mr. Grogan Myers, Mrs. Cameron.
I have a suggestion that by, at some point next year, that we entertain some serious conversation and invest some serious dollars in the Cedar Taylor area that some of my colleagues ran their campaigns on. And we have pretty much forestalled any activity, given, trying to give the mayor a chance to get his feet wet. But I think it's time to throw him into the deep end of the pool. Okay? Cedar Taylor.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can assure Mrs. Cameron, I've been eyeing that pool all summer.
It's great slant there.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, okay. There are none. Thank you. And then, it's not listed here, but we mentioned earlier, we'd do this. Mr. Chuni, City Engineer, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update on the construction projects. Our 2018 road program, we have completed all the streets we're going to pave. You heard about one earlier this evening, except for Groveland, and that's because of the water line jobs. So, as part of the paving program, though, we still have to do the remainder of the City Hall campus. Everything to the west here of the Fire Bay doors is going to be paved. That is scheduled for the weekend of the 21st and 22nd. We're going to try and do as much as we can over the weekends, so that when they come back on Monday morning, we'll still be able to park here while we're doing other curb repairs and things like that. So, the paving is really only one day, and we're going to grind and pave hopefully beyond Friday and Saturday. That's the 21st and 22nd. The Service Director and I have completed our list of streets we're going to crack seal this year, which is some of the things we put in from the Service Committee meeting. Crack sealing is scheduled for the week of the 17th of this month, so that'll get started at that time. Speaking of Cedar Taylor, we still have the bump outs we're going to be doing at the curbs there, and that is scheduled at the same time the City Hall is going to be done. That's when the concrete guy is going to be in town, so I would imagine that'd be the last week in September. That'll get started. As far as the water line project goes, it did just get started on Groveland. The bypass piping is up. They're taking their final sample today from Cleveland Water. You have to pass three samples in a row to make sure then you can hook it up for housing. The house is up, so you can drink the water. So, if it doesn't pass, then they have to keep flushing the main. They took that last sample today. They should be able to know the results tomorrow or Thursday. Then they'll hook up all the houses, then they'll start digging up the street, removing the water line and putting a new one in. So, and that process takes about, probably about 45 days, once they get started on that. So, and, and the report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chuni, there are several areas around the city where somebody did something a long, a long time ago, and it's still there. For instance, there's now a hole at Sillsby right before you hit Bovore coming, coming west. There's this thing on Traymore right before, right before, is that, that, those are water company?
I believe those are water main breaks. Help me out, Mr. Perko.
I believe he's talking about hydrant repair.
Hydrant repair. Yeah, those, usually have to do with the water line repairs of some kind, whether it's a hydrant or a water main break. Cleveland Water comes in and they replace the pipe, and then it's up to us then to do the pavement above there. I don't, we don't like Cleveland Water repairing our pavement. And a lot of times, what we do is we wait till they get a group of them together, and we either contract it out, or we send it to the paving contractor we have now, which is Ronyak, and ask him to do it when he's got the paver in town again. So, and that's the game plan for that.
Am I correct in assuming that by the time the snow falls, those areas around the city will be fixed?
You are correct in assuming that.
Okay.
That is the goal. That is the goal, sir.
Yes, I believe Traymore is scheduled to be repaired on?
When we do this campus here, when he's paving for?
Yes, September 21st.
Well, the one on Sillsby was dug up and filled in, and now it's dug up again. So, just, you know. As long as you're aware of it.
Jeff and I'll have to look at it. I don't know. Usually, those are water main breaks.
As long as there's a plan, that's really.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Wiseman, and thank you, Mr. Chuni. All right. That takes us to reports from standing committees. Building, Mr. Wiseman.
You know, there was a time in my life when I thought the maddest that people get would be when you talked about putting chickens in their yard, but I am wrong. We had a committee meeting to discuss the rental registration fee change, and I think it was a universal, not unanimous among the council members who were able to attend the committee meeting, that we were interested in backing out of the new fee structure in some way. We left the meeting thinking, we all, we all expressed our intent that the moratorium that the mayor instituted, which I thought was a great idea, that that would continue till the end of the year, but I had a discussion with the mayor today, just about sort of the administrative nightmare that that, that has brought about, because people are getting their rental permits but not making any payments, so the city hasn't been taking money in for the last couple of months. So, what we had sort of come up with was that we would let the moratorium lapse, or sunset, as it were, on September 14th, then, then Council would, at the meeting on the 17th, repeal only the new fee structure, leaving the rest of the ordinance in place, because there are parts of the ordinance that the mayor and I think are that are important. And then we would discuss sometime within the next month or so, a new program in terms of what a new fee structure would look like, what else Council would attempt to do, and different areas where we would attempt to ease our minds in terms of the landlords and the properties that they keep. Keeping in mind, the suggestions that the landlords gave us in terms of the new program. Many of the suggestions that they gave us were important, were good ideas, although I think some of us would prefer that they gave it to us with a different tone of voice than they have in giving them to us until now. But I think that's the idea, that the new, the city would continue to take money on the permits going forward after the 14th of September, collect the fees that people haven't been paying up until the 14th of September, and then instituting something so that well before the end of the year, we have a new program in place that, that takes into account everybody's considerations, including Council's desire to make sure that the rental properties in the city are taken care of, and that the city has a, I think, a path forward in terms of keeping tabs on both the properties and their effects on the city. I- the city. I'd like to particularly thank my colleagues. It has not been an easy road to travel so far, but you guys have all been very receptive and willing to be engaged in the process, as well as the administration. So that's where we are at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Okay. Civic engagement, Mrs. Cameron?
No report.
No report? Okay. Finance, Mrs. Pardee?
Thank you, Mayor. The finance director gave the report, basically. We did meet an hour before the city council meeting. We had an aggressive agenda. We talked about the current status of the finance department, both in terms of employees and software. We talked about the current state of the city. We took a look at some reports and talked about more reports. We'll get into this more. And I just want to thank the finance director again for the hard work he's done, for this very detailed agenda and the reports he's already provided to us, and for an aggressive plan for the budget. We typically have started the budget process in October as a council, and we have tried to go forward without temporary appropriations, and for a number of years, we were successful. But I really like the plan you have in place, so I'm looking forward to our budgeting this year. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Pardee. Governmental affairs, Mrs. Weiss?
Thank you. So we have a governmental affairs meeting at 6:00 p.m. before the next council meeting. And it'll be discussing the CIC and the land bank, and how they interact or are kind of separate from each other. We just want to get a good understanding of both of them. And I actually just wanted to ask the mayor if the CRC came in yet, approval?
No, it has not yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Recreation, Mr. Erdel is not here. Is there anybody from that committee who has a report to give?
I can speak to the fact that we will probably be entertaining a date shortly for our next bike, family bike event.
Wonderful.
And, but we just have not worked out any of the details as yet, but it will be forthcoming.
Is there another all geared up type event? Is that what this is?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Very nice. I attended the last one, and it was very, it was a very good event.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Safety, Mr. Rock?
Yes, Mayor. As Chief Perko had pointed out, on September 10th, they're going to look at the second ladder truck, and that their committee will be convening to go over the different options. So with that said, it'll be about time to schedule another safety meeting to go over their findings and learn more about the truck. I'm not an expert at ladder trucks, so this is an opportunity to get educated on why we need a new ladder truck. So I'm thinking probably the end of September, since they're going to be looking at the other option on the 10th, and they'll need some time to convene. So I want to poll the committee for the end of September for the...
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Service and utilities, Mr. Sims?
No report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Committee of the whole, Mrs. Pardee, anything?
No report.
Okay. Very good. We have exhausted our agenda and our reports here, and did not mean for that to be a pun. But, but we do have the executive session left for council members and myself only,